Yeah.
I'm excited. And then like this, he'd he'd present it about it as static. Did you he would be like such a business. He'd be like, that's such a shit up, you know? And he was like, oh, sorry. You know, like.
I think guys just switch it.
That's a contract.
It's all been under.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I.
You get some information from that.
Yeah.
They just find out.
Actually, they asked.
Twenty two.
So that was surround by saying.
What I bought tonight.
We're a little off.
Hi.
Yes. So it was a little different contract. I'll talk to them.
Yes.
Scott and Jason.
I have not spoken. Over the. Be sure. I mean, I have our response. Don't worry about it. I like it.
Yes.
And so please look at.
In the grocery shop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is. Please. We. If not. That guy takes. So.
Right. There's a lot of.
Yes.
About. Yeah. Yeah. Percent. Should be to the. The bodies are like that. That's what I think they ask. Maybe. I just. Um. And why do you got it? I mean, all of us. But that would be for number. There's.
That don't mean.
Yeah. Yeah. That's. The. So he decided. Just another. Fakers. And also. For ten. I think you're gonna say. Yeah. I think we can. There's some. There.
She was.
So that's the issue.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway. Thank you. We sign in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I see.
Yeah. And I. Yeah. Very sad.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Well. I think we'll change the message. Yeah. Already there.
So you said.
Yes. Yes. I'll reach on. Correct. You were.
Other function.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to see. Yeah. So. It's how I hear. But this. I had to answer.
Um.
Thank you.
That's.
Yeah. Sorry.
Sluts.
That's. Serious. I certainly left. Right. He's gonna make a. Josh. And hurry up. It's like.
We're not saying.
But. Also. Like they have like that. We got resources. All for.
You mean.
How long? And they're. And they're. So. That we're all with them. Inside.
You know.
Two minutes. I don't know. Like five minutes or so. Second. Okay. Okay. All right. We'll do that. Okay. Well, all right. Should be lost. If we have a. Both.
Okay. Cause I have.
We can. But I did send out an email. Should be on the agenda. We're. We. Okay, we're running a little late. Everybody signed in? So.
Okay.
Okay. Lisa. Did you switch around with?
Oh.
Mike.
I guess.
Thirty one, thirty two?
No, it was.
Just from my record.
Twenty three and twenty four. Just switch.
Okay. Okay.
At Mr. Sal.
Yes. Okay, welcome everyone. We're gonna start the meeting. Man of work.
We have Larry Clark. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here. Okay. Item agenda one. Spence reading the minutes. Workshop dated October fourteen. In the regular meeting, October fifteen. Uh, two, through bills. Free transfer monies. Well, that's listed as submitted by the auditor from October nine through October twenty two. Four. Prove additional appropriations. They submitted by the auditor October nine through October twenty two. Going through commissioners, if there's any questions. Five are now auditors here, so. You can answer. Five approved appropriations transfer. Uh, October nine. Through October twenty two, twenty five submitted by the auditor listed. Uh, second increase appropriations. October nine through October twenty two, twenty twenty five. Um. Margaret, can you explain to the?
Oh, I'm busy.
Yes.
Which part do you want?
Just, uh, I support health.
Uh, so the board of health. Uh, in the past, uh, they receive these tipping fees from the farge. Uh, but they stopped receiving those. And they did budget for it for this year, but they haven't received any money. So they're adjusting their budget based on the, uh. Uh, the. Revenue.
Now we see. The amount, six hundred. Forty nine thousand.
Yeah, we had decreased our estimated revenue yesterday as part of the budget finishing meeting. Uh, as a side note on that, the commissioners, uh, the general fund used to receive a portion of that tipping fee, and we had to reduce our, um, estimated revenue in that account to stop receiving the money. Uh, I think on the general fund side, that was about thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Well, obviously.
That would be a question for the board of health. It has something to do with the farge. They're not, um. They still have the. They still have their certificate, whatever, but they're not transporting. But they used to. They're dumping these. Yeah, there's something.
The board of health doesn't have to audit their.
They're, well, the farge isn't paying the board of health, then the board of health is not paying us our share. So fortunately, there's something going on with the farge. But that would be a question better for Jonathan. That's the, that was the basic summary of what she gave.
Okay.
So before, um, Martha, your joke on the honor, before we go to the next two which are mine, um. Christie had prepared some things just really quick to kind of review with you. Um, about debt, um, and I'd like her to be able to do that in a public session. One hundred.
I got.
Okay, and then I'm gonna give this one to. Uh, Bob and Gary. Since parts of that is theirs. Okay, well, I'm using mine.
Yeah. So I'm gonna let her review it, and I will kind of do a little bit of some ways what we would like to see. On the next.
So the first page is just the notes outstanding for, um, the county. These are due March twelve, twenty twenty six. Um, you know, we've rolled these over in the past, uh. Were had new. Projects, I wanna say for the governmental type, these are all rolled over. Uh, from a few years back, and then there's enterprise type, which will get updates from Bob and Gary. Uh, when we need them. But anyways, there's the outstanding amount, the governmental type is four million, seven hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. This is just a summary, you have been provided this in the past. Uh, like I said, these are due March twelve, twenty twenty six.
The next. Just to reiterate, uh, so that we, my commissioners, this is all of our short term, not long term. These are notes usually not in anticipation of, of like the monitor.
They're usually a year long. Uh, we do try to do debt only, or issue debt only once a year. It's more cost effective for the county, the constitution. So. Um, the next page is a front and back. Uh, the top page though is. From our series that we. Issued in twenty twenty five. This is kind of just a brief timeline to kind of show you when the. Uh. Amounts needed to be rolled over, which in this case was March thirteen, twenty twenty five, and when the process started. And so you see at the top of this, it says January twelve, twenty twenty five. That was when bond council circulated the draft legislation. But prior to that. Bond council needed to know what the, what, uh, notes we were going to be issuing, that what we were going to roll it over. He had to do the resolutions on that. So there was time that was involved prior to January twelve. And then also on January fifteenth, we had to submit the OMAP. Application to the straight state treasurer, and that's that program that. Are. Participating in to get a bond rating or to get a debt rating from the treasures, the state treasurer. And the next page is the email that went out to. The OMAP program on January fifteenth, just to show you. When we issued, when we, um. Sent the application for our financial advisor sent the application for. All of the. Work that also had to go into that application, all those things that we had to attach. So our kind of point on this is it, it doesn't happen quickly. We do need time. So once we do make decisions on what gets. Done, we have, we need some time in between there to do all this stuff to file with the people.
And, and the final page, um. Which we might could do the twenty five. It's just a summary of what needs to be done on your end. Um, the debt decisions that do need to be made. Um, given the timelines for dealing with our notes and anticipation of bond, it will be necessary for the board commissioners to decide. The following prior to beginning the process. What notes will be rolled over? Keep in mind, incomplete projects will need to be rolled over. You can't do, you can't, we can't go to bond. If a project is not completed. So discussions regarding stands of the projects with Daryl Donegan will need to take place. Um, so you'll need to see what projects will be completed, where, where we're at with those, so that you know what needs to get. Continue as notes and what can be rolled over. What notes will be converted to bond? Please keep in mind that converting the notes to bond is a new process for both Christie's and Sartre's themselves. Christie has never been a participant of that. She, or predecessor was, and I was never a participant. The other part of that is utilization of OMAP, which is a completely new process for us. So remember that, because that makes it more time consuming for us. And then also will any note.
Would you work with Daryl on that, or who works with Daryl?
Um, you, that's your responsibility.
So we.
That to communicate with Daryl and draw what you want. It's not my decision.
Good, so.
So. Go ahead.
I would say we, we can have a, a greater discussion, as we just wanted to put it on your radar. But maybe we want to have a discussion with our financial advisor and bond counsel, maybe on that, like a, a, a meeting or something along with. Uh. Daryl, and then trying to figure out what's the best route to go. We just wanted to learn these decisions that needs to be made soon.
And the final one is will any new notes be taken out for you? Um, it's our recommendation that the board can process side these three questions in late November or early December. So this is today, just putting it on your radar. If you wish for us to bring in, um, Matt Sizinski to discuss further some of these things. That's fine. I suggest that you, um, at the board or designate someone on the board to have those discussions with Daryl. So do the projects that are listed on the debt sheet to see where you're at. Um, there's other projects that are sanitary. We communicate directly with sanitary on those, and that's not a, a big issue. That's something. But these projects are your project.
So you, how do you communicate with the sanitation engineer, but you don't.
Because that's a routine. That's a routine thing. They, they have the process down. Um, I, you know, if you want the sanitaries to communicate, that's fine. But I think the commissioner should be aware of where the project are.
Oh, that's not a problem. I just, I know what the commissioner says, like, Daryl's new. And this is new.
And this might be something Shara can help with too, because she has been here, she's been a part of that. So we, when I say we communicate with them, we don't. Get together with them and decide what they're.
They send us an email. They send us an email. Yeah. They, we don't. Yeah, we don't really discuss it. They just want to know. There's still decisions that you guys have to make.
But you will work with Shara. So. Okay, cause it's almost making it turn away.
No, we're here to work with you. We just don't want to be the ones, we can't be the ones making that decision, but we will work.
We'll initiate.
We'll provide you with all the information. Yeah, and then you guys will be approving these. And no, we'll work with, um, Shara and then also, um.
Yeah.
Daryl.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're here to help, but we just. You know, we don't make those decisions, I guess, to how that goes.
I understand.
Yeah, we don't wanna be like on the day of resolutions, this is the first time you guys are here in our office. Yeah, so that's, I guess, where we're going with that.
Thank you.
Great. Um, and if there's no other questions for Christie, I'll move on to.
Sure.
Items that remain. Thank you, Christie.
Maybe.
Um, number seven. Um, we have two vehicles. Uh, and they're utilized by our office. One is no longer, one is no longer, uh, usable by our office. About a few weeks ago, the Sierra. Was our weekend. It can't be used anymore by us because it's safe for us. Um, and then the Malibu is, we had four vehicles that our office had really only need three. This is the highest mileage line. Um, so we, that we just supposed to, um. Dispose of that. Um, Daryl did approach me prior to the meeting today about that Malibu. The problem that we have, I wanna keep it on the way to again, how it's a gov deal. The problem is what makes it more complicated. We can't just transfer it to like another department because it was, was not paid for out of general fund money. It was paid for out of our REA. So that's a question that's something, so. And I, we may pull it, but I think for now, I prefer to just keep it. Even though it's been, we can always undo this if we have to, if, if we need to transfer it, if we feel like.
You can transfer the title to.
Well, the title is always held by the commissioners. But, but we could, we're used to the methods of the department. They cannot be used by another department because it was paid for out of REA funds. So if there's a legal way for us to do that, uh, um, and reimburse the REA funds in some way, we'll do that. But for now, I'd like to just leave it as it is, and if we want, if we decide to do that, we'll, we'll do it separately.
But you believe it's usable for another department?
It's really usable, the Malibu.
Okay.
The car is, it's just, at this point, we're just not using it, and it doesn't make sense for it to sit there and rot. When it can be used, it can be sold, or it can be used by another department, and we could reimburse the REA.
Good.
Um. Number eight. I have. I want. Right. Uh, a few weeks ago, we approached the commissioners. Uh, first, we purchase a replacement vehicle for, um, the GMC Sierra truck. Um, that had frame damage, um, rendering it a roadworthy. Um, we. Got some quotes for vehicles, and this is a hard process to do because especially to find used ones. My friend here has helped me with this quite a bit. Uh, but we managed to get, um, three quotes, uh, out from the ones that we sent out. Uh, we had. The one issue that's come up, we need a cap on this vehicle. Um. That we explained the last time, what we utilize, what we haul in there, and it really does need a cap. To be able to protect our equipment. Um. Hard to find. Used trucks with. We don't seem to, to be out there, there's not a lot of them. Um, we asked for quotes with cats. Um, Coal Valley had, um. Two vehicles that, um, did not have caps. They were not willing to, they don't do that, they don't put caps on, but they did give us a recommendation for someone who. So that's why the agenda item is listed the way that it is. We're actually, we ended up with the twenty twenty Chevrolet Colorado. We felt that that, even with the cap, that still brings us in well under what we said it would be. Um. It would be nice to have a newer one, the other one from Coal Valley put us in a little bit high though, and I promise that we'd keep it under twenty five. And we feel like the twenty twenty is, is a good vehicle. Um, our recent measures people actually drove both the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty two. Has drove it, has drove the twenty twenty again yesterday to make sure that's what we want.
There's no need for.
Um, so they, they're, they're not gonna be going out, they're going to gas stations. And, you know, they're not going out in the storms and snow, they're going, they're not.
Okay.
They're going to, to test most of the time that the. Uh, truck utilized for, um, again, sealing of the gas month, because that also for larger scales. None of that happens in a situation where you're getting. Um, so came up with that, so that's why the agenda item has like two separate lines or parts to it. One is for the truck itself from Coal Valley, the other one is for the cat. Any further questions?
Well, what, no, would that be paid for, what fund is that?
That comes at its general fund money. Um, that's what we requested.
So. Correct, but on the general fund. Previous car, do you wanna sell?
No, the previous vehicle weights and measures, yes, will, because that was general fund. The Malibu was paid for out of REA.
Right, but if we're giving you money out of general fund, we can transfer property to other governmental agencies without going through gov deal. Can we just donate that to us, put it in a different department and then buy you a truck?
That wasn't part of what we discussed two weeks ago.
Oh, it never came up, but, but why not? If we need.
But you're going to get, you're going to get the money from the, the truck. Um, I, I came in well under what I said I would. Um, uh, that money should go to the REA where it belongs.
As we come across. Uh, it's, our inspectors need vehicles, we, we got vehicles throughout the.
Oh, we're fine. But that's not, that's not. I can't, I, first of all, I can't give money out of, that's paid, I can't give REA money to the general fund. And effectively, giving you something that was paid for by REA money is giving you REA money.
Why doesn't REA money pay for the pickup?
Right.
Because that's real estate, weights and measures is general fund. Our, there are restrictions on REA money, what, what it can be utilized for. It can be utilized for appraisers. It can be utilized for GIS. It can be utilized to pay for my real estate staff. It cannot be utilized to pay for something that's supposed to come out of the general.
Yeah, Bill Dance, so, well, that Bill Dance in prosecutor's office, I, I shared the same concern, at least generally, as Auditor Yoder does. When something is purchased from a, a designated special revenue fund that has designated uses under the law. I, I am a little concerned about, even though, you know, th- there has been a lot of use of this vehicle over the years. I am a little concerned about then taking that proceeds of selling it and giving it to the general fund, rather than. You know, returning that to the source. I think. That's more of maybe an audit question, and our, our independent auditors, for what it's worth, have been very helpful and very proactive in answering. That's maybe something we could reach out to them to see how they feel about it. Uh, but I will say, generally speaking, it's been our advice over the years that those special revenue. Items be returned to the fund that they came from.
And, and I, I don't mean to be rude when I, when I say. Weights and measures is not a real estate function. You understand that, correct? So REA generally has to cover things that are real estate. That's why I have a concern at even giving a vehicle that was paid for from those funds. To another office that's general fund.
So what do you do with the vehicle? It's just sitting there, so. What happened to that vehicle? Not using it?
We're gonna sell it, and then the money that we make will go into the REA where it came from.
So we can buy it though as a commission.
Well, and that's what we wanted to investigate, if, if it could be purchased, but it, it was brought to me.
And who sent it? Part two, or?
We, that's something I would have to discuss with Mr. Dan to find out.
Yeah, that would be a, a question, whether or not. You know, whether or not there could be some sort of appraisal that would set what the value of that vehicle is, that could be reimbursed. You know, back to the REA, but then allow the county to keep the vehicle. I don't know. You know, a lot of times the auditors have been okay with things like that, as long as you're basing it on some sort of quantifiable.
Sure.
You know, information and not just a, a guess. Um, but I, I don't even know, I mean, I'm not a vehicle person, I wouldn't even know what to guess on that.
They're willing to work something like that out. I just can't donate it because it's came from a different. Any further questions?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know. You know. Want to. Ask the auditor about the general fund? Whether or not that could be. Done. I know the prosecutor has a little bit of issue with it, but. Maybe it can be delegated back. Right? Just makes sense, we're all, I mean, our same maintenance guys maintain all the vehicles. I, I, I understand what she's talking about, it's a different thing, but if Sheriff's formed an extra vehicle. Uh, I would ask the same thing, you know, could they donate to a different department or they got through a grant?
If it was paid for out of general fund, it would make sense to do that.
Right.
But this is not a, a vehicle that was paid for out of general fund.
Does anybody know what kind of shape this vehicle's in?
It.
Um, fifty thousand mile, Daryl Donegan, uh, facilities. Uh, the vehicle has roughly fifty thousand miles on it, needs tires. I, I think the total crystal needs twelve hundred dollars in repairs.
It's had a pretty good brand.
Shake, no rust, it's, it's in good shape. Low miles.
But where, where do we store these vehicles? Like this one.
Yeah. All of them are working.
So, so even the weights and measures, they, do they keep it loaded with the?
No.
Topper on it and?
We don't keep that one at all, this rate.
Is it garage or anything over there, or is it?
There's a, there's a, a lot, uh.
That's right, that's why we don't keep it.
Which is why it needs the cap, yeah, because.
Cap, we have it.
So there. Commissioners, there used to be, a long time ago, there used to be a really nice. And then it became nothing after years, right? I have no wisdom, but there is an evolution. Um, the Sheriff's Department used to be there, actually, during the time, um, on the way. And then there was a very long garage where all of our county, where the ski dudes were held, where all of the, you know, water equipment that is now at the, was at a fire station. Uh, but that was deemed, um, inhabitable, and it was torn down. So after that, everything just went out into the. You know, we'll call it junkyard, that's basically what it looks like. It has been cleaned up a lot since. Yeah, all the people sit out there. There is no place to. This stuff. We don't have a garage, per se.
Well, well, we could do a garage. Yeah. Sanitation engineer on a.
True. But that's pretty cool now.
No, 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 except for you.
Are they gonna?
And so is, so is one hundred. Well, no, yeah. Yeah, that's a huge profit.
Yeah, and it is. So long-term things to think about.
We'll have to leave, this vehicle fifty thousand miles does have value. I can just tell you, so we'll have to figure, I can tell you, we'll have to figure out. Where we're going with it for further discussion, but. And another. Find out, see what she wants. Right.
Okay, I think we could, I mean, we could have somebody reach out to. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say independent auditor, because otherwise I'll forget their name. Clark Schaefer Hackett.
I can do that.
And, and see, you know, there's a.
You can pull it off, you can pull it off of the agenda item for seven. Um, I'm all right with that. Um. I, I will reach out. But I don't, I can handle it.
I suspect I know too, I, I just don't know if there be any sort of depreciation scheduled, if you hit the end, that there, they wouldn't care about it. But I, I don't, again, our general thing has been returning it to the fund, so. Yeah.
So it, and it's, and again, um, we need to be careful about. Using money that shouldn't be used for other things. And that, and money and the equivalent of donating, and it has value and shouldn't be given. And shouldn't be given to, just given to.
Is that where REA, does that come from fees or, I mean, or is it taxpayer?
That's, it's from real estate assistance, that's, it's the, it's a real estate assistance fund, so it's, it's what, it's money that's generated. From property taxation, but our, it's our administration of that, it's it's that money that's paid out. For us doing that task. Not general fund.
No, but I'm just saying, if it's taxpayer dollars, it's taxpayer dollars, that'd be different if it was.
It's not. Is dedicated, there, there is, you know, she, and, you know, the dog channel has dedicated funds, I mean, I I'm just telling you. From budget perspective, believe it or not, although it is all at one point, to your, I understand what you're saying, general fund. There's dedicated and restricted funding sources that, that is the money they bring in and there in turn it has to go directly to their dedicated fund. Pearl High or Vice Co.
Absolutely.
For the dog channel, for the, well, for us, the hospital trust fund and the workers' comp fund, those are my dedicated funds, trust me, there's been many a times where I said I have an excess. Access, I would love to donate it to the general fund, but I can't do that, it's illegal, um, so. There, there is restrictions within each funding source, JFS dedicated funding sources.
But we could purchase.
But we can purchase it with general fund, potentially, absolutely, I agree.
So just give us a price.
And I have no problem pulling it off of that.
Just give us a price.
So, well, I have, I have two different things coming from different commissioners. I have some commissioners who are saying get it off, get it from the um outside audit fund, find out if I can donate. I would prefer not to donate it, but I also, if they say that I can and you guys want it, and that's a condition of me getting my vehicle that I need. Um, I will do it.
Okay.
Well, let's all, we're bringing us up for.
Subject is going to the sensitive side, so we only have so much money to get, we can make it worth.
Let's not go too deep on this right now.
So what do you want me to do?
Let's take, let's take seven off and give us.
That's what you want, a price, alright.
Price and see if we can do it, so let's do both questions, yes.
Well, you, I mean, you can purchase, I will, we'll look at the legal aspect, alright.
You want seven completely gone?
No, or just the one, just the one, we have something.
Okay.
I carry new bras and sorry, I'm here, all this is going on, all of them. I don't know, if it was a trade in twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred dollars, if you were trading it. In private sale, only one hundred dollars.
Four to six thousand.
Oh, four to six dollars, okay, alright, so, just so you're in the ballpark, so you have some idea.
Yeah, we'll have to take that back to the manager and see what the manager said.
Okay.
Alright, no other questions on it, so on seven, we're gonna uh line out or get rid of the now do, and our eight. We're okay, guys are good with that? As we, 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 we don't wanna lose this vehicle. So if I don't know for sure that you're okay, I need to know who's okay with that. Make sure I assure them if all that for.
You've already drove it, you know. Check that.
Two thousand and eight, we're selling for parts, right?
Well, more or less, it'll, it'll be, there'll be full disclosure on it, it'll be on gov deals, everything that's wrong with it will be listed. What they do within is up to downs, but everything will be listed.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Bill, you wanna take this one?
Sure, Commissioner's Bill Dance of Prosecutor's Office. Um, we have another conflict issue with our office, the Children's Services Board has filed. Another um action against our Trumbull County. Common Pleas, uh, Domestic Relations Juvenile Division. Uh, it's a, an actual case filed in the Court of Appeals between our two statutory clients. So, uh, it has been referred to the court's insurance provider, Monca- uh, in the Department of Administrative Services. It is not an eligible insurance claim, but the court would like to hire the same firm that the insurance company uses, Montgomery Johnson. Uh, at the same rate that they would, you know, essentially offer a discounted rate for insurance provided counsel as well. So this is just to start the process of getting outside counsel appointed for the uh family court.
Is this an appropriate time for you to bring, just to bring up another subject? Yeah, based on, I guess we could. We, we recently hired another attorney for another elected official. And things that come up on the internet that are very disturbing. Not legality of whether she can practice law or not, but the way she tries cases in public light on social media. And the way she's stating like her own position that that she was removed from in Mahoney County. I don't think I want that representing Trumbull County or bring that circus up to Trumbull County as a commissioner. This didn't come to light until after we uh approved. Hiring this outside counsel, um. And. With this too, we need to do a little more due diligence research to make sure, I mean, I I, we, we voted last time based on. The clerk of courts recommended somebody and with the prosecutor, prosecutor recommended us to approve that. And then when this stuff came to light now, and I look at it, you know, I don't know that I wanna be or have our. Vote be affiliated with this person right now with everything that's going on on the internet with her. You know, and I think it looks bad for us, I think it looks bad for the county. And I, I don't, I, I, I know our clerk needs representation, but I don't think this is the best representation right now to represent a Trumbull County. Uh, situation, or at least have our stamp. So I was gonna ask tomorrow to retract that. Yeah, yeah, let's get, discuss it further tomorrow, but. With this being the same type of thing, I guess, yeah, I wanna make sure. On this, if this is shown to us. We need to do some research, is this the best representation too, you know, I, I trust, we trusted last time also. But I think we should take time ourselves as commissioners to make sure. We don't go down that same rabbit hole, and and next thing you know, we're news next week again with the wrong choice.
Well, I understand, Commissioner, and and I'll, I'll just say this, I don't. You know, when you say that the, that the clerk of courts and the prosecutor recommended the person, that's, it's not true, um. Like some of the things that were printed in some of the news sources categorically aren't true. So I think we need to be careful about what sort of internet accusations we toss around, because frankly, I don't think any of us sitting here at the table know what's true and what's not true. So, uh, what I can tell you is that one of the things that was reported in one of the news sources was that this particular attorney. Was not permitted to practice law in Ohio, it's categorically false, you can look it up yourself on the Supreme Court's website.
That we knew.
Uh, so, I, I understand, you know, taking internet heat on social media, but I'm also very careful personally about. What I believe and take as fact that I see on social media. Uh, now, that being said, I'm not vouching for any particular attorney. Uh, you know, the, this was a specific choice made by the client that was going to receive that representation, clerk of courts. And. You know. I, I can't say there would never be a time where we would suggest a different attorney, but, you know. At, at the time this went through, there was no reason to have any doubt as to. Uh, that choice, and I'm not sure there still is, perhaps there is in in some people's mind. My question would be, have you guys talked to the clerk of courts to find out whether the clerk of courts is satisfied with this counsel? Uh, you know, I don't see often the clerk of courts coming and questioning what attorney the commissioners hire outside, and I'm not sure that it's great practice. For. One elected office to question the council choice of another elected office without at least talking about it with that person first. Um, you know, that being said, if you have, you know, there is a, the commissioners have a statutory role in this process. And the statutory role in the providing of outside counsel is to jointly apply with the prosecuting attorney to the Court of Common Pleas. For appointment of outside counsel. That's what the board did, you know, the board agreed to file with the prosecuting attorney an application. This application for this attorney was ultimately approved by the administrative judge of the Court of Common Pleas. And the, the, as I see it now, the issue would be, and I think there's a real question. Is whether the Board of Commissioners does have actual power to rescind that appointment once it's approved by the Court of Common Pleas. Without trying to go back to the Court of Common Pleas and saying, we believe there's a reason that the court should undo the appointment at this point. And, you know, I, I don't foreclose that possibility. In all cases, I'm just not sure here if we've hit the point where there's been a sufficient discussion to really go down that path. If the board wants to talk about it internally and feel strongly, I'll certainly take whatever, you know, back to the prosecutor, I'll take it, you know. Wherever I need to, to, to get the board's opinion communicated, I'm just not entirely sure, uh. Uh, you know, it's, it's, this is a, a, something we've never done before, we've never had the Board of Commissioners sort of micromanaging who the lawyer for another agency is gonna be. And I, I'm frankly not sure it's a great path to go down, but if the board has its reasons, I, you know, I'm certainly open to hearing it.
I can speak on behalf of Commissioner Malloy that. I've seen on social media, the videos, which aren't AI, I know that they're not AI. And they're very disturbing, and the commissioners. Uh, are taking a lot of heat over the hiring, not that that, I, and I understand, we do have to do our due diligence and research. Uh, whether or not this is even able to be done. Uh, prior to that commissioner, I think the prosecutor's telling us, we need to reach out to. The clerk of courts, let him know our feelings about what is, what we're seeing and what is being said. Um, the commissioners, on behalf of commissioners, as one commissioner, I don't wanna be part of. Some sort of a debacle that's going on here, it, it's coming out of Mahoney County, ending up in Trumbull County. With the commissioners, we're taking the heat for it, and, um, and I know it's social media based, but when you look at. When you look at what was posted in the video and other things that are going along with it. It does paint a very disturbing picture for the commissioners. Who would agree to hire that individual to, you know, to represent the clerk, so I think. The bottom line is, we're gonna need to discuss with the clerk. Our feelings. And, and take it from there, but.
And I guess it comes down to whether, did we hire her, or did we just agree to hire somebody and she was hired by the clerk? We're the ones that hired her, if we're responsible for making the decision to hire this person with the prosecutors, I want out, I wanna retract it. If we just agreed to provide outside counsel. And that's the choice I went with, cuz right now we are taking the heat for hiring this girl, we're taking the heat for, for ju- for allowing this debacle to happen here. And, and I, and I can agree with some of, you know, what people are saying on social media that, you know. It, it was a, it's a bad, it's a bad choice of, uh, a rough, bad route for commi- us commissioners to take up here in trouble. To. Hire this person based on the way she's handling things on social media and, and I have to. I, I don't have very much trust in the process that she's gonna be able to represent our clerk well. Um, based on the way she tries things in public settlement, tries it publicly, uh, the other stuff she's dealing with right now.
You would suggest that we talk to the clerk?
I would suggest at the, in the, at the first. That it would be good to have this conversation if you're concerned about clerk's attorney in this case. I think it would be good to talk to the clerk and see if the clerk is concerned about it too. Um, you know, if so, the clerk may be able to also shift course if, if that's his.
Well, I guess, I, I had asked for an executive session tomorrow, and maybe if we can have that before, I mean, that's not on the agenda here for this. I don't know if we can invite him to be there, and then I can make a motion before afterward, after we talk.
Yeah, I don't think that there would be an executive session category that this would fit, so I, I don't, I'm not sure.
Hiring of a employee or anything?
It's not an employee of the county, so no, it's a, it's an outside contracted. So I, I think, you know, you guys could do that, uh, you could talk to the clerk, you know, if there is something that, that you are, the, the board is that. Concerned about, uh, you know, I, I think you could. You know, there may be a path forward here, I just, I'm not entirely sure, because just to be clear, you know, when the commissioners adopt these, just like this one that's on here today. The name of the attorney and the hourly rate is on the agenda, okay, but this is. In virtually all cases, the, the attorney is requested by the entity that's seeking outside counsel. It is not something that the commissioners choose, that being said, it is on the agenda, and if you're uncomfortable with that, I understand that. Uh. That application, though, is not effective until and unless it is approved by the administrative judge of the Court of Common Pleas. Which it was in this case, so ultimately, it is the Court of Common Pleas that approves. The attorney, the hourly rate, and the scope of the, the work that's being done, uh. So, you know, I, I, like I said, I think that if the commissioners are uncomfortable with it, if you talk to the clerk. And you still decide you guys want to move forward with some sort of attempt at rescinding it, that's, that's something you should consider. I'm not sure whether, you know, again, if the clerk of courts is not on your side on that, I don't know if the clerk. And or this attorney might try to challenge, why are you taking away this approved? That, I, you know, I, it's hard to predict where that would go, because we've never had that situation here in the county before. Uh, we've never had a, 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 a situation where the commissioners have gone back and tried to rescind something like this app back. Again, I can't, I can't say that it can't be done, but I, I can tell you, we've never had to cross that bridge here.
Well, my comment, you know, I haven't seen it on social media, so, so I don't, but, you know, the two commissioners you're talking about, I mean, I'm gonna feel that I was out of town. But, um. I see both points, but. Ultimately, we need to sit down with the clerk, right, and let him, know, make him aware of it, but. You know, he's the one that suggested that he wanted this attorney, how do we tell him, no, you can't have the attorney of you? That you wanna choose, you know, and you want to represent you, I don't know how we do that, do you know? I think that's, that's very, very simply spoken.
That's my fear, and, and I'm not, you know, I'm not supporting or, or, or going against any particular attorney. I, I'm just saying, as a general practice, that's not something we've done here in this county, we generally let the client choose. Within a reasonable price range, I will say, you know, i- if a, if a. Person would come to the board and say, want a six hundred dollar an hour attorney, the, the board may say from a financial perspective. That's too much, we're not willing to go there, but, uh. You know, we've never really had a situation like this that's, you know, based more about. You know, the perceived actions, you know, of an attorney and, and whether or not that sort of goes along with what, you know, your values as commissioners are, but. Uh, you know, like I said, I, I'm not.
Is there any way that we can get the clerk of courts over here before we end today and ask him those questions, if he's satisfied with the representation? That he has? Somebody call and come on over, and Sean probably come, we're gonna have a long meeting today, so. Let's find out what, I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying, I mean. And plus, the administrative. Or over there, they, they approved it, right? And they haven't asked us to rescind that. I wonder if they're aware of what you're talking about. Would it be inappropriate if one of the commissioners talked to someone from the court?
That's, that's an option too.
So, would it be the presiding judge over there?
The administrative judge is generally the one that handles.
Isn't the administrative judge who they hired to represent against?
The administrative judge is a party to this underlying case, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, let's, let's move forward, try to get a vote to choose.
Yeah, come here, uh, I sent a text over, Commissioner, I, I don't mean to break momentum, I don't think of momentum. But we do have a guest who was here, supposed to be here a couple of weeks ago, we had to cancel on him. And he's here now and has to leave by eleven thirty, and he's on our agenda for today, is there a way we can move Mr. Press? And his guest up for their quick little presentation?
Yeah, if he has to leave eleven thirty and two, I would entertain that, Commissioner, are you okay with that?
Little crazy day, I mean, with the back of two weeks, but, Mr. Press.
Great, Commissioners, thank you very much, Josh Press, Press Public Strategies here, uh, with Glen Bay Recovery Center located up in Rock Creek. The CEO and COO here, Rick Trice, and Sheila Vandergriff, they're gonna present real quick to you. Did you do, uh, services here in Trumbull County, now it's Coverhills, but I'll let them, uh, kinda go into that, I just wanted to trace that to you, three, and. Yeah, any questions for them, so appreciate you moving us up, thank you.
Thank you, Josh, thank you. My name is Richard Trice, I am the president of Glen Bay, we're a, um, drug substance use. Disorder center located in Rock Creek, about fifty miles to our form. We concentrate in serving Trumbull County, Ashville County, as are the main regions. Glen Bay has been in operation since nineteen eighty one, we have a hundred eighty five bed hospital in Rock Creek. Our census normally is. Patients, of those patients, about sixty five percent are men, about thirty five percent. We also, um, at the center do detox, overthrowing management. And residential service to some residential housing. Um, we also have a center. Um, we also have a center here in Niles that we have outpatient services, aftercare, some recovery houses. We also have a center in Erie, Pennsylvania, in Beechwood, Ohio, Canton, Rocky River. In Niles, we have some recovery houses, but I'd like to ask Sheila to talk about recovery houses here in Trumbull.
So Glenn Bay initially began servicing the Trumbull County area through Niles back in the mid nineteen eighties. In nineteen ninety six, we purchased our first recovery house. We're located on North Road next to the Care Haven, the former Care Haven workshop. Uh, we have been there since and and next door, we purchased several other houses. We've invested over eighty thousand dollars in purchasing homes within the community. We also employ up to eleven individuals who generate about four hundred thousand dollars worth of um income into the community. Plus, we have interns who come from both Kent State and Y S U who um, do they are in class for social work or counseling and they do their internships with us, so that generates additional funds as well. We also have a medical director that works at our facility. Um, over the years, Glenn Bay has invested over anywhere from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars each year into these recovery homes, just to keep them maintained, renovate them and update them each year. We are Ohio Recovery Housing Certified, we received that this past year. And as Rick said, we currently can house up to thirty men in our facility. These individuals, many of them are already um, career oriented. We also have a workforce development program for those who are not, uh, we help them get trained. Um, we help them get their G E D. At some point, we do work with Flying High um, to help them re-enter the community. So a lot of our residents go out, they start working at the local businesses, a lot of them are actually professional chefs and work up and down the strip as far as uh, you know, doing food service. So we do have a lot of uh, input in the community. And another thing that we do is we work with Niles Community Service as part of our program. We do ask that these individuals get back to the community. And we are a resource for the food bank as well. So each month we go down, we also do the Thanksgiving and Christmas donations. Um, as we're moving forward, we respectfully are coming to the commissioners today to tell you that we are here in the community. And as you move through as looking as far as opioid funds disbursement that we would be interested in coming to you and presenting to you as far as what we would like to uh, see within the community. As I mentioned, we are located corner of North and Main, which is a little bit of an area that's rundown, but we've been working diligently to improve our housing. So we'd be requesting funding for the recovery housing and to just improve that corner area. So we're aware that the city of Niles is um, undertaking an entertainment district. That's a main hub in that corner to head from Warren into Niles. So it'd be a nice area to start thinking about upgrading.
I don't have anything further, but if you can answer any quick questions, if you might have.
As far as funding sources, what would that help you with? If the commissioners, you know, there are some, first of all, we appreciate what you do. Uh, it's, it's those types of services are very much needed in ours, you know, everywhere, but um, what type of where are you lacking or what type of sources are you trying to fund?
So right now with Glenn Bay, we receive some grant funding. So we received some more Southern funding last year to help us do interior improvements. This past year, um, our most recent purchase, which is fifteen North Road. Uh, we renovated the entire house on the outside just to bring it up to more standards, Glenn Bay standards. So new roof, new siding, sidewalk install. Um, new gutters and downspouts, but we have additional houses. We'd like to look at possibly funding, you know, exterior improvements to really build that up with the renovations going on next door at uh, Care Haven. It's just a persuaded transition back.
Sonic system structure.
Yes, landscaping, housing, things like that.
Um, and then who, once we, once you renovate and and we do go landscape, then who keeps up the maintenance on that?
Glenn Bay does. We have a maintenance team of the Rock Creek that'll come down, plus we have two employees that Niles facility mow and make sure of all the exterior and.
Forget how many houses there are.
I love the location and I know where.
Yeah, we're really trying to unify that whole area there.
So you'll submit it to the commissioners a budget?
Yes, we could.
Have you, anybody talked to April Careway about this at all?
We work with April. She provides funding for the residents, so um, that helps individuals who cannot afford the rent to come in and be able to.
So this is one time?
Yes.
Well, very much appreciate you coming, presenting that to us and uh, yeah, again, it's definitely, you know, we work with April, this is something that we can definitely concentrate on.
So did you like a
Anytime.
It doesn't matter. And and my question to the commissioners would be, you know, there's some state money available, wonder if we could buy through the state some of that. Nation one, one nation, one second.
You didn't mention that you received grants.
One Ohio.
You received grants, one April's a representative of all.
Granted, we've received from Trumbull Municipal Recovery Board is to help residents themselves, but the board's seeking now it's all the infrastructure.
But those funds could come from the state. Our lesson.
Oh, uh, out of the one, uh, yeah.
Uh, the grants.
I agree, yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, commissioners, appreciate you.
Um, I'm sorry, I guess we didn't finish up one time because that kind of broke the thing.
Uh, we were gonna talk to Randy.
Well, I guess we're still, just relating to Niles, that's not the clerk of courts saying this is the domestic relations thing.
Yeah, right, but um.
We're done with that, that's the only reason why I.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess Bill Dance, our prosecutor's office again, I guess the question is if you guys are going to start, you know, vetting all of the attorneys and things like that.
No, I'd rather not.
You know, that's, that's fine, I guess, um, you know, I mean.
I I'd rather not either, but in the situation, the unique situation, yeah, this last week is something different.
This is a very unusual situation.
Well, same. I I do not personally know the attorney that that the clerk of courts picked. Uh, and so I I, you know, it's hard for me to say much one way or the other.
Probably haven't seen anything.
But that being said, with um, the firm Montgomery Johnson, this is a um, you know, this is a, I don't want to say a large firm, but they're, they're a fairly good sized firm and they are the firm that the state of Ohio Department of Administrative Services assigned specifically to the judicial insurance.
Can you explain this case a little more? Or are we gonna have to get a counsel for children's services now too, since you represent them also?
Children's Services has two inside lawyers that they hire. And they're the ones that are handling this case on behalf of the private behalf of children's services. So I don't expect there will be any outside counsel for children's services in this case. Um, I I don't know that I want to get a whole thought into some of the details of this because some of these family court cases are are a little bit.
That's the children's services case against.
Against.
The court as.
Yes, they filed.
In reaction to something that happened in the court.
Correct, it relates to a case that children's services was involved in in court um, with a family and the uh, the the judge, the allegation at least is that the judge has maybe exceeded his authority and they filed a a writ of uh, mandamus prohibition against the court to essentially force the court to follow an entry that they believe applies. The court obviously has a different feeling on it. And that's now landed them in the court of appeals. So this one is, it is the result of an actual case down there that uh, that the again, the children's services was at least partly related.
If it helps the commissioners at all, the reason we don't typically see this is because Corsa is our insurance. And what we, what you do behind the scenes is H R and the prosecutor or both of us. Uh, we're working inside councils appointed by Corsa, which means this never even comes to you, but because there is a conflict of interest here and because the prosecutor's office can't, you know, and because Corsa won't cover, or this is not an insurance, as we stated in the beginning, an insurance approved, um, case, if you will, which does happen at times. That's why this is now being brought to your attention. Typically, all these things to be quite frank are done behind the scenes between, you know, human resources as your direct Corsa in order to place in your office or in conjunction. A lot of times we work together, so um, that's why.
Are they are they seeking a reversal of a decision? Or are they seeking damages? What are they actually seeking?
Right now, in this case, there's no claim for actual financial damages. This is they, the uh, children's services board is essentially seeking enforcement of a order that they believe applies from the Court of Appeals. The uh, the domestic relations division down here has reached sort of a different conclusion on a decision they made. And that's where again, it goes sort of back to the Court of Appeals to decide, you know, which which party's gonna win today.
Me, I have no issue.
We also have the same with workers' comp, if you feel any better. Um, I mean, so this is something that is not atypical. Now, H R tries, we try at the D H O and S H L fight ourselves as far as we can, but at some point, that's why we have an outside attorney. This, we have to fight things of common general, commonplace rule. And we have one case.
Okay, Mr. Hickey, E M A, I think you're up.
I think, ten. Uh, John Hickey, E M A, um, for, I guess it would be ten eleven on your. All it is, is a um, new router for the command uh, what I will do, that will allow us to put uh, the E T and T, M T verbal, and the uh, star link of satellite and the uh, local command ports. And that will also allow us to inform, you know, how your uh, and we don't have good uh, air net up there. It will allow us to put up to a hundred and fifty people on air net if need be. And then uh, the next one will be for the twelve uh, Chromebooks. Uh, along with the additional uh, uh, monitor for the command.
I I and I believe it's part of the overall.
Yeah, both is a part of the. Part of the overall.
Right.
So my question is, um, since it'll allow you a hundred and fifty responders to go on, is there another unit which will allow you more people to go on?
Um, well.
A larger unit or?
Well, yeah, I should always, I mean, if we have a outage, I could bring in equipment for, are you talking like, or I'm sitting.
I don't know much about it. It just said that you want to buy this equipment and it says that you could put on a hundred and fifty responders. The question is, should you go the next step up, which will give you three hundred people that you.
Well, we could, um, but.
Since you have the money in there.
Well, um, okay, I'm trying to be cost. Uh, you're, you're looking going from, I think, thirty thousand up to twelve thousand. And then I could.
Yeah, but what does twelve thousand give us?
Um, almost uh, forty. I could put up to forty thousand people. But I could put the whole county on air net if need be. But for what that unit's for, I felt a hundred and fifty first responders is kinda what we need.
I get that, I understand that, but what I'm hearing about some of those A R P funds, what we have to use them for? Would it be wiser that we go to the next step?
And we'll, we'll talk to Julie about that, but I, I do agree that ARPA, there's some, there's been some discrepancies about where we can go with it. And we're gonna have to utilize these monies before the end of twenty three, the end of the twenty six.
I, I'll be happy, happy to.
But you see where I'm coming from.
A hundred percent.
The command vehicle will rate.
If I can pull it and do that next week, if you want.
And then you'll come back in and say, this is what we can get for this amount? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
The next meeting is the thirteenth.
Uh, November, so it has to be on Thursday. Well, it has to be submitted when?
Um, still the Thursday prior.
Coming up or no?
It would be. Right.
Not, not this coming Thursday. Okay, so I'm okay. All right, cause some effective when I'm done talking, I'm out. So.
But you understand where I'm coming from?
Okay, yeah.
I mean, if we could get.
All right, I have the quote. All right, so it's a matter of typing up the new uh, resolution and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I have a feeling that a lot of what we do is gonna have to go towards that command vehicle to outfit it. If these ARPAs are gonna, you know, be able to be delegated to that and not. Other areas.
To do, that, that's where, I'm, I want to be honest, I was trying to.
Oh, no, I understand.
And I agree a hundred percent with you, but what I'm hearing, and I'm not sure until maybe a little lunch or honor tomorrow.
All right.
Yeah.
Do we want to table ten then until he gets back to us?
I think so with eleven.
Well, um.
Or what else is on ten?
Uh, if we can move forward, what else? I I apologize, I did not print out the new one.
Yeah.
My, my agenda. And we move forward with the uh, Chromebooks.
Yes.
All right. On yours, eleven.
Right.
Move forward with that, we'll table ten.
Yeah, but we hear back from you on the.
Well, there's really no hearing back. I'll just pull it. I'll redo the resolution for.
You can, you can just let me know what changes in the figures.
Yeah, I I have the quote, cause I got three quotes.
Unless it's not that much, we can throw that, I'll throw it over here.
In other words, for tomorrow, please will receive the new quote and then we would vote on it, is that what you're saying?
That's what we want. You can get it to me.
Do you know what that quote is though?
I draw a little three, cause I didn't know you would want to know.
Does it say much? Does it say how many people?
Um, no, yeah, we're wanting to. I should find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll email.
Yeah, just email.
Okay.
I mean, like you said, Commissioner, and I think Commissioner Malloy would agree. I've been hearing some chatter about the way these ARPAs can be used and now it could set a new precedent about what the way that we move with what's left. So Julie, do you agree with that?
Um, it's not new information, it's.
More than I'm just saying, it's been brought to our.
Right, well, maybe it's a new understanding of what we've been talking about, but I don't want to just try to explain it one sentence, which is why I asked for.
Right, that's okay. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Oh, I'd like to talk about it today. I just don't know, do you want me to talk about it now? I'm ready.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
I'm getting an evil eye from.
I mean, I mean, Julie's she's got the information, so it's our, it's because it relates to this.
Good.
Well, how long, well, Julie, you can if you want, I mean, I I I don't have issue, but I thought you wanted to.
I'm very concise, I won't take much time.
Okay, Julie Green? Please protect yourself.
All right, Julie Green.
I didn't know that Commissioner, um, Bernard was gonna be here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't know he was either.
I did bring a printout for you, which I emailed you already. Um, and I only brought. Sorry, I, I know you don't like this, Lisa. That's why I didn't. I will definitely get her one, she knows that. So, these are the MOUs that are in place. I think there's eighteen total. Ten of them are Gary's. I imagine he's gonna spend every last dime. Just want to give you an uh, background of how this started. A year ago, our office started working with Martha. Because we knew we would never be able to get all of these projects under contracts. We talked with Gary, Tanya Rogers, Martha. And so, working with the Auditor's Office and everybody, we got these MOUs in place that obligated these funds before the deadline. So, according to the ARPA guidelines, you have three ways of having these funds obligated by the end of the year. One is a contract. One is an agreement, Gary Schaefer worked with communities on, and one was these MOUs. So, we managed to obligate all thirty eight million dollars by the deadline. And I think that maybe I'll let, um, K O talk about their discussions on. I, you know, their understanding of the questions that were posed to them, but. As far as I know, and as far as talking with them and reading and talking with Tanya, nothing has changed. The obligated projects are the only ones. And the projects under contract are the only ones that can receive additional funds. Using the whole amount. You cannot create new projects. You can't take money that's not spent for the EMA, for example, and use it to relocate the EMA building. That's my understanding, how things are. And the reason I'm bringing it up today is I would like for the commissioners to understand the history, understand the whole process. Because we have thirteen months left to spend this money. And if we are going to initiate any one of those that are not started yet, it's gonna take every day. From now until the end of twenty six, finish this project. Specifically, I'll talk about two of the projects that I agreed to take the lead on, one of which is the Planning Commission Building. There are no, a number of items at the Archives slash Planning Commission Building that can be funded. With monies that are left over from other projects that have not been spent to date. I'm working on, uh, the whole spreadsheet with Shara. She's out of town. But I've started working with her on populating all of the projects and where we are in every single one. And our staff is a willing partner to make sure that we know exactly how much money has been spent. What is left over, where can it be applied elsewhere? Those decisions are the commissioners. I have my recommendations and my requests because I spent so much time on this. Along with Martha Yoder, her staff, Gary Newbrow and his people and, um. The Commissioner's staff. So, and I did want to bring it to your attention because we have two new commissioners and. And truthfully, I don't know that even Mr. Malloy is aware of all the work going into our office and the Auditor's Office. With the ARPA funding. Um, so, with that being said. Once we have a clearer picture on how much money is left. Then we can come back to the commissioners, hopefully in a week or two, and let you know, okay. You can decide to take this extra money that's left from these balances and apply it to. Reducing the debt burden or sanitary sewer water. Or for replacing the hundred year old elevator in Planning Commission Building. Or, um. And there's a number of, again, a lot of library steps, which, by the way, I just got bad news from the Department of Development. I applied for a pre-application for that project for flexible funding through CBBG. And they responded yesterday that we weren't selected for even applying. Which I wasn't happy about. But we also got a grant yesterday too for the champion project, so I was sort of balanced out. So, um, with that being said, it's, it's a lot of information, it's a lot of tracking that. I've been working on for a while and will continue to work with. Um, Sheriff, cause I know she's working on it closely too, and. We just need the commissioners to understand that we, we have to keep these moving forward. So, one of the other projects that I think is important is the downtown fiber project. That we proposed last year that connects this building to all of the county-owned buildings downtown work. So, I can only speak to my experience with our connection issues, um, in our building. If I need to work on a large file, I have to go home. So, if that gives you any indication of our connectivity issues in our building. So, having a downtown fiber, dedicated fiber from this building to all of the buildings, I think it was. Um, some of the family court, our building, uh, the building officials building, and I think another one. That was on the proposed project list. So, that's another project that can be funded, but that will take. The entire thirteen months to complete, because we're dealing with.
How confident are you, if at all, that federal government may?
Not at all.
Allow us to delegate money to the general fund?
That, that's not, that is not even what. The, that, that's not even the understanding of the question, which is what I learned a few weeks ago when I met with. Um, our consultants on, because I, our office also has worked with them on. All of the grants that they're applying for with the commissioners, because on the SAM dot gov point of contact, another. Very boring and involved task that we take care of on behalf of the commissioners. Um, so, yeah. First of all, no. This doesn't move that fast. They're not gonna change the treasury guidelines. They might extend the deadline. Which is what stated, I think, by the, by the consultants. But they're not gonna change the entire, the rules, the guidelines that were set forth and modified three or four times. With that being said, if you want to, and, and that's why. Well, that's why I'm here today to explain, if you wanna wait, that's fine. Just so you know, a year from now, none of these projects will be done, because it takes thirteen months to do them. Um, I don't know what your options will be at that time. It might be as simple as, um, as an internal action. To increase appropriation for a project. And I promise Meca Township, I bring this up, they need more money. You could, you could increase their. Appropriation for the project that you've already given to them, I think. But we'd have to talk to Tanya Rogers, but it's only for projects that are under agreement, under contract, under obligation. Can't do anything new.
See, when I was in DC, National Association of Counties did a presentation with the Deputy Secretary of Treasury. And they said that about fifty percent of the counties in America didn't. Fulfill all their ARPA requests for the money that they had. So, there were new guidelines coming down to extend deadlines where people could. Apply for the remaining funds that were still out there. If the people had reported their funding correctly. Those were gonna be the counties who were gonna get a second crack at reallocating their ARPA funds they have. If they had didn't report it, they didn't, they didn't follow the guidelines of reporting. Those ones may be excluded from being able to spend the rest of the money that they had. They were, they assured us. You're gonna be able to spend every penny that is allocated to you, and if there are new projects coming along. Put them on the shelf until the Treasury gave us guidelines in September. While the government shut down, here's where we are now. The consultants are aware of that, but they, this was. An issue that isn't just trouble county, it isn't just all the counties in Ohio, it's every county in the whole United States. Like that got ARPA money.
Yeah.
And they were told there will be extensions of this where people that couldn't find, they, they had counties where. Where they had half the money, they couldn't find a project to spend it on, because they couldn't. I understand we do, but there are counties that didn't have projects. And they couldn't spend all their money, cause they couldn't get a project in the ground quick enough. So, they said they will extend a lot of people to have new projects or extend. The request deadline after the first ones were spent, allocated, done, any remaining funds. We're not gonna come back to the government, that we're gonna be. Stay where they were to be reallocated with extended deadline. Right, you're saying we could spend up, right, we could spend all of it that way, or we could hold on to what we didn't spend and then wait to apply for new projects.
That's the problem, we're gonna walk in a hard spot.
That's whatever you got in America's doing, they're not gonna penalize us because.
I, I don't wanna lose the money, it, I mean.
Yeah.
I can understand it being delegated to the general nembree, but I, I really believe that if those monies are out there. Personally speaking. That. We are on an if, gonna be holding on.
Yeah.
On an if, and if it fails, we're gonna lose all that money. So, what do you do? Do you?
Well, like I said.
Counties are worried about losing all the money, and they said, you're not gonna lose all that money.
We've reached out to our Senator and Congressman, and have we got any answers back from them?
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think last week I asked you to follow up with them. Did you follow up with them at all?
Yeah, we will if their government shut down.
Yeah, but the offices are still.
They can't get an answer, Commissioner. I, I talked to Dave Joyce personally about it.
But, but we were on this before the government shut down.
Right.
And, and I agree with.
And they were all waiting in September.
We have to spend it, and if we can reallocate some of it, we know where we want to put that.
So, my, my point is, yeah, my point is, if you. If you are, we just need a decision today, uh, or, or this week or next week, on. Do you want these projects to be poured, or do you want to resend them? And then, and then if we can get an answer to reallocate them. That, that's all, all your decision. I'm just here to explain, these projects take time. We need time to implement them, law library steps, planning commission building, the, uh, downtown fiber. I can go through each one. I'm sure Gary's spending every cent.
There's no question. We know how much money's left?
That's what I've been working on.
Martha, you're Trump County Auditor. I know the one that you had a question on, with, with an email exchange, you talked about, um, the Marx Tower. Um, there's probably, and I, it's, Shara's not here, I can't tell for sure, because we don't have the final figures she did. But there's probably gonna be about a hundred thousand. Maybe a little bit more. Um, but it's done. Um, we don't know if it's fully operational. We know we're getting electric bills. Tim reached out to Department of Administrative Services.
So, that particular project, we would lose the hundred if they didn't read?
No, you would have to, their resolution, take that hundred thousand and put it to another obligated project. So, but that's just the obligated projects. We have a whole list of projects that also have balances that I. Offered to help follow up with all of the communities, and we're working on that. Uh, I spoke with Shara before she left on vacation, and she said, yes, please, please help us. So, that's what we're doing. That was Friday. So, I updated most of the spreadsheet. I have questions about the balances. I don't have all of the ins and outs. Cause I'm not the person that's been in charge of this. Um, however, I am willing to help. To identify what is left in each pot and where you want it to go. And, but like I said, if you want to wait to see if you're able to use it for things that aren't obligated. That's great. I don't think that it's gonna happen. I think that K O agrees with me. That's not what was. That wasn't the question that was posed. Question was, will we get an extension? That is probably a yes, maybe if that's what you heard, but I, I think what there, it's, it's a complicated process. Um, that they laid out and changed many times. And I just don't have any confidence that they are going to change to set this late power. So, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, tell you that we're willing to help. Uh, the commissioners just need to take a look at the list and decide. Or do you either forget all the projects that are existing, we're not gonna reallocate or decide which.
I don't think we're saying that. We, my question is, how much money do we have?
Right.
And, and each one, and then we could decide when we want to get, but we, we definitely don't want to lose.
Right, no, I understand that. But we, we started on the MOUs, and then I reached out and asked for the entire list. So, that's what I'm working on. There's over a hundred and forty projects. And there's a lot of information. You've got a report that Shara submits to Treasury. Which is in a different format than the report that Martha started on behalf of the commissioners. And so, comparing the two, making sure that those line up with every single journal action that was done over the last three, three years. Um, has taken some time. So, that's in my spare time on the weekends, but I'm not reading the higher vice code, that's what I'm still.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not doing, and I'm, and I'm gonna advocate for my building, but truly, I don't really. Have a, uh, an agenda. I just wanna make sure that this is moved forward, that you understand we have thirteen months left. And whatever it is spent on. I do agree that.
Did the county engineer, I mean, other than the roofing, did they get any money, Gary?
Right, but those contracts are.
You know, I'll just try to think. No, I think our buildings were alone, weren't they, Martha?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we received.
Yeah, all the, the only things that were, um, Martha, you're Trump County Auditor. The only thing is that were road projects were the ones that you guys did on. The technically county projects, but they were ones on township roads.
So, that's another question that I'm not certain of the answer on, is whether or not we, you can apply additional money. To projects like something that Gary did or Gary did. Um, after the contract splits out, or does it have to be an open MOU or an open contract that. Where you could do a change order. I think we got the answer to this already. Where if, if you need a change order for additional money, we could.
I believe so, and actually technically the ones, so technically, those were not subgrants.
Right.
Those were county ones, so I imagine that it would be the same as applied for all the county. Where we could do change.
Okay.
I'm not sure on the. Because those are a different category. This one ended up, what, what it was, was a county project. Done for the townships under that, I can't remember the higher vice code, but we were allowed to do.
Well, we need to stay on top of it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm willing to do that.
Law Library, you know, if we can't get funding somewhere else, then yeah, we're there, I mean, that's a must, we have to get that taken care of.
Great, but in order, we do have the engineering done, done for that. But, um, just speaking from mine and Gary's, I don't know about you, Gary. Our, our bidding this year has not been successful. We bid things out, we received no bids. So, I just, you know, anticipating.
So, we have said that before, we bid things out, we don't get bids, so how, how do we proceed with that?
Bill Dance of Prosecutor's Office, generally what we've done is, uh, unfortunately, Julie's had a lot of experience with this over the years with people not submitting bids on projects. What we've tried to do is, uh, we've tried our best to identify maybe why the bids aren't coming in, whether there's. A thing that can be changed in the specifications to make it a little bit more friendly to the bidders. Um, we've tried to expand how we advertise, you know, we, whether it was maybe the first time would have been just in the. The Tribune Chronicle, but then maybe we also try to advertise in some other things to broaden the scope, but ultimately. You know, that's the, that's the thing, when we get an excess of the competitive bidding amount, we've got to get bids, so we have to just keep trying.
And we don't get a bid to project.
That's, that's it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, you're telling me that we wanna fix the law library steps, and we can't get a bid, so we can't fix it?
That's the bottom line is.
Oh, we got, we got some bids on it, but the, the bids, one, one was seven hundred thousand and four fifty and more than three fifty.
Different, okay, that's.
And I'm still saying three fifty is ridiculous for lots of steps. Early on, that's we had seven hundred thousand, first one, yeah.
So, and just on that, and I, I shouldn't even speak on this because I probably can't do it intelligently and I'll. Go back there, to, to Darrell Harland, but my understanding with that project in particular is. There was a wide range of price possibilities, because we don't know exactly what we're gonna find when those steps come off. There are some structural supports that we believe are stone underneath those concrete stairs. That may or may not be structurally sound. If they are, then it could be a. Less expensive, I don't wanna say inexpensive, a less expensive project. If we get in there and we find out that the. If we get in there and we find out that the structure is compromised that holds up those columns out front. All of a sudden, we've entered a different price bracket, so that's where I think you're gonna see some of that. Variation on price on a project like that, because it could be very expensive, it could be moderately expensive, so.
So, which is the structure was, the structure is caving underneath, and then also there's one more that I wanted to point out. It's a historical, um, that was some of the biggest barriers, roadblocks if you will. It has to be a certain slate, not slate, there's a material, I can't remember what, um.
Sand.
Sandstone, um, and they don't make that anymore, so to make it. Whatever it was to make it comparable to sandstone was an astronomical, that that was also driving the price, and I vividly remember that because. You guys had said, okay, is there any way we can fight that at the time? And historical, I mean, no, it's a historical, if you have to do it as. And that's just the way it goes, I hate to be that way, but it's on the. It is, so that's why.
It was some national historical.
I know, right? I know, that's that was our next, yeah.
Those have been significant.
We applied for a grant for that?
We're working with you right now on grants for that.
Through the National Historical?
Yes.
How much was the grant?
It had a maximum, type eighty K consulting, I think it had a maximum. Twelve thousand five, and we put in for ten.
Thousand dollars?
Yeah. Which one? So I think it was three hundred and fifty thousand, don't vote me, but it was around. I might correct, I can't believe I remember.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for steps.
I know, I get it.
To to that haven't been used in years, that. I mean, I I like preserving history, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for steps.
But whatever, whatever are options.
Yeah, I'm not saying, we're just a grant is telling you that.
So what happens if we repair the steps, not to their specifications?
Maybe have somebody reevaluate the engineering specifications, they they.
No, I'm serious, what happens if we put in just the steps for normal function? What would happen? They take it off the list, or what happened?
Good question.
We get sued, so how do we get that answer?
We can't, because the federal government shut down.
And so Prosecutor's Office, and I think the other thing too, though, is that at some point where you lose. I hate to say lose control, but when where you lose control over that project is when it comes to structural. So, you know, even if you could get away with a, you know, just a basic concrete, like lower level. If you get down there and you find structural issues, you still have an issue.
And they're inside.
That's, that's the fear, yeah, and I I, you know.
They move the steps and they use the door, they're using right now.
Unfortunately, it also holds up the building, like, so, um, that's the structural portion, I hate to do that to you, but that's the truth. The way these buildings were built historically, again, remember this is a building back from surga, I can't even.
Eight seventeen, I hope it's that.
Eighteen, something on the, on the.
Carnegie Building, it would have been Lady Tenders or Earl.
Okay, either way, if you cut those steps off, the building is going to. No longer exist, so it it will cave in.
So there's no way, Daryl, that you can go through a side? Kind of look and see what the structure.
They did, yeah.
And 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 what did they find out?
There's definitely deterioration of it.
It's a matter of time before somebody gets.
Probably use sandstone instead of granite.
That's why it closes down. It should be closed down.
That cage.
But we re-bid it?
Well, there's not much else we can do.
See what the price is?
My recommendation is to reevaluate the existing tech specifications that have been over a year. I don't know if we can get maybe somebody internally or have somebody at architectural. Firm take a look at them and see if we can tighten them up. So that it's not as expensive, so that it's maybe a fix, so that perhaps they just are safe. I I don't know, cause I'm not an engineer, but that's, if you're concerned about spending the the money.
Well, I agree with the pressure point, because we wanna spend eight hundred thousand dollars for that.
You don't have eight hundred thousand, you have three hundred and fifty, if it wasn't obligated, you can increase that if you choose to. I don't have three fifty, you've spent twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for Stroller Architects.
So I'm talking about to redo the steps, so.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm telling the ARPA balance.
Right, that's our balance, when we did the first bids, they said seven hundred thousand, we said no.
Well, I think I did the bids before the ARPA money was put into place. I don't believe we even had technicals.
No, I feel like there was a three seventy, there was a. And that's why it makes sense, if it's what Julie is saying, that the total project was allocated at three fifty. When Bill came back to you guys, the issue was where he was saying, we've done the engineering portion, this is, we went out to bid, this is what it would cost. You guys said absolutely not, we're not gonna up the allocated amount, so it would have been over. And that does actually give perfect sense. If we spent twenty-two thousand in architecture, and my three fifty was allocated. And it was coming in at three seventeen or three fifty, to my recollection, and yeah, you were over, and you guys did not wanna extend that. Because you were saying, is there another way we can do it, which I understand, but we are here two years. It it it's not gonna get done, so the steps stay closed, and it is what it is, or.
You'd rather have an elevator in Julie's building, or steps then?
Not for the elevator.
I do that, too.
As a, as a planning director, but as a concern citizen of Trump County, I would say law library beats our elevator everything.
And again, my only, it's not my position, but.
Historic structure.
As long as it's safe, that's my, I, we cannot have, it cannot be a liability to them, so we cannot legalize it, it's mine.
Well, we got the bar associations, press has something issue also.
But my point for explaining this was not for you to discuss it, what you want to do today. I just wanted to lay it out, so you understand your timeframe, and we, we really do need to. Um, discuss your priorities moving forward. So if if that is a priority for the law library, I've already talked to Daryl and Harland about this. And Bill, before he left, our office is more than willing to lead that, like we did with the planning. Um, the downtown fiber, again, we're willing to work with the August office on that. And that, that affects not just our building, but for the. That's a good question. We haven't even gotten to that point yet, because.
Yeah, ballpark, just throw something out.
I'm gonna say probably less than two hundred thousand. But without, we, we stopped. Tim and I met initially with the people who would be able to facilitate the dedicated fiber line. Uh, just to see what the steps are, and we stopped doing that when we learned that the commissioners wanted to, you know. Potentially allocate the funds for other projects, we figured. It wouldn't.
Isn't Warren doing a whole downtown fiber thing to the city, Warren, all going to Warren, or adding fiber throughout the city?
I mean, there, there are people adding fiber, this would be a dedicated fiber line for security. To, from this building, and Tim can explain that, to the planning connection building, the building department, which is next door. And also family court and a couple, I think one more, maybe veterans, I I just don't recall, it's been a while. So. It just would.
Well, we have to stay on top of this.
Money and leasing.
Julie.
But I don't wanna expend any more staff time on moving forward on these projects if it's not something that's gonna come into fruition. That's, I guess, my point.
Real quickly, twenty-eight, twenty-nine while you're here. I saw.
Sure.
You wanna do that? Well, this is the, uh, the study for the, uh, Lake Masquita. We had a presentation, uh, uh, two weeks ago. Don't worry about it.
I don't know that this is just something that we.
Well, we're gonna prove it, but I've already. I've already got it taken care of. Last week, we had to have it in for.
Yeah.
So I met with Nick. And then, uh, twenty-nine is sewage treatment, what's that?
That's the annual appropriation that we apply for for replacing some systems, so we're just asking to find those.
That's all you, Danny.
So I'll continue to work with Sarah, she's on vacation, I'm not gonna bug her on the patient, but if she returns, we'll follow up.
Okay.
And anybody else that wants to be involved. Gary, do you have any input to something?
Gary Schaefer, he's in the patient.
Possible to go to.
Well, we are now, cause Gary's gonna go through twelve, or he'd be quick, and then seventeen is agenda. So it'll be like, what, two minutes? Gary's very efficient.
Yeah, Gary Schaefer, Engineers Ops, number twelve is to concur with the Engineers Ops to close. Uh, North Levitt Road, the ones that, the first one did after the fast, uh, it was a week ago, um, this morning, I wanna thank. Gary, you were facilitating a meeting with the project, uh. Team and, uh, weren't that suspicious? So we went over not only that second one here that's gonna close, this Wednesday, it'll also probably extend it through the rest of November. Uh, it'll be open after working hours and all weekend, today, whatever, working out there, it's probably. Up there, so we worked through safety issues at that, very good meeting. That's number twelve. Thirteen is to curate engineers' office to grant the right-of-way permits listed. Particularly note there, you see a lot of fiber, uh, you got a little, I'm doing a lot of fiber out, extensions. Then, uh, on the page later, you got charge inspection, bright speed, also penalized, so they have from the west. Extensions of fiber optics, not just in the urbanized area, the suburb, well out in country too, a lot of these extensions, to be honest. I'm just, to bring that up, and fourteen, engineers' office to grant special haul-in permits listed. An overweighting, wasn't there? Fifteen is to, uh, to concur with our office and grant special annual fleet permits, they're listed. And sixteen, um, that is authorize the clerk to advertise for statements of qualifications for design-built projects. Operates for CNG stations, we have like a personal request for a station. It's usually put it in, it's served us very well, but it's time for us to brace for that.
Thank you, Gary, I appreciate your patience, and we got a long meeting. Attorney Berkey?
Yes, thank you. I'm I'm here for the representative commissioners on the aisles. Whether it's time, whether it's the, here, modern annexation. Petition is, and it's a type one annexation. The annexation petition gives, as it's now filed, here's to the. Commissioners, no discretion, sent to that, says, you shall pass it at the next meeting, oh, I won't. However, as I reviewed it, there is a procedural deficiency, I've gone over this with Tom Major. The requirement is that a certified copy of the. Annexation item be submitted, if it's not certified by the governmental agencies, named aisles. And what's your township, so take a week or so, your net certification in. And as soon as that certification is in, it can go online, just advise your next meeting, this second week of. November, that just asks that the matter be reset, your agenda. Yeah, yeah, well, thank you for your patience, observing, I was in, we'll see you soon.
You're welcome, we are more than welcome to say. Thank you. HR, I don't know, Alex, do you wanna handle these? Sir, just.
Um. Sure. Uh, so now, number eighteen is to approve the personal action for. Employment of Mr. Donald Daniel, the position custodian, who's range three, zero years, fifteen sixty-four. Building and vehicle maintenance department. Uh, commissioners, although I did not sit in on this interview myself, did in. Coordination with our department head, Daryl Dunneken, and and or Harland, I'm not sure if they both partook or one or the other. Uh, but, yeah, we have been down custodians, um, we've been doing all we can to not fill them. Uh, but they felt the need was there, and I have to support them in that. Uh, they have multiple who are on either some sort of medical leave, and then we've had Trenton who left, uh, the past couple of months. So they they are down. Um, with that being said, we did pass this, you know, briefly night screenings, and it'll be a hundred twenty day probation. Um, that was a union job, and we went through all of the bids and everything, and did the interviews, and that's that. Any questions on the custodian?
So we did lose. Did lose employees there?
Trenton, yeah, we lost Trenton, we've lost, uh.
Well.
Lellen, yeah, went to groundskeeper, so there's been a lot of changes within, yeah. And then before that, I believe we lost, um.
Got a lot on that. So.
Yeah. Any other questions about that? Uh, number nineteen is to approve the resignation of Mr. Larry Keller from the position of nine-one-one telecommunicator in the Trump County nine-one-one center. Um, commissioners, this one is definitely important to talk about. Uh, of course, we do not like to see the loss of a nine-one-one dispatcher. Um, there is a reason here, uh, this gentleman, we moved him to the top rate as soon as we could, again, the top rate is the top rate. In hopes of keeping him, um, and he still chose to leave for a ward sound. It was willing to pay the mayor, so that is the honest truth. We are in contract negotiation, negotiations with nine-one-one right now, I'm there every single Monday, um, and more to come on that. So we are trying to, obviously. We obviously know what the trigger points are in nine-one-one, and one of which is the salary, so we will discuss that at a later time. And obviously, we're losing people, um, to smaller dispatch and centers, who. So, there's that. Um. I don't wanna skip over, but there's more items that I can address right now, if that's okay.
Yeah, one of them.
Uh. Number twenty, number thirty. Is with sanitary, so I'll let them just. Be it, but yeah, essentially another resignation.
At, uh, my radio center engineers, uh, one of our drafts, drafts, uh, Garrett's manager is designing a better. It's good, uh, he was a great employee, we don't want to lose him, he's still in the government, maybe soon.
Yeah, then, I'm putting that up. Do you believe that it's gonna be a hard replacement?
Um, I've already had.
There's been quite a bit of interest, I mean, even just recently, so hopefully they're qualified, but we wait until the job comes down, and then. But again, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you, Bob, Daryl.
Okay, Daryl Dunneken, Trump County Facilities, number twenty, authorize the clerk to advertise for competitive soon bids for, uh. Fourth floor stone building renovations. Um. This is not for general funds, this is to be paid for from the adult probation department. For twenty-one, to award the lowest responsive and only price quote submitted by Imperial Mechanical. Uh, this is for replacing the rooftop HVAC unit, boilers and pumps at the stone building. Twenty-two, to award the lowest responsive price, uh, to.
Excuse me, yes, service funds generated from.
Those funds, I forty, so this, this project's been. On the desk for, for two years, I believe there was a loan for that.
Commissioners, yeah, commissioners, this is where we need to have the discussions, um. So they were saying, if you wanna wait for share, that's, that's totally fine, too. Um, but this stone building that was given to you on the debt, I had definitely brought this to your attention. And when we got the debt at the beginning of the year, saying, something is off. Why we're, why we're sitting on debt, and we had a due from the project, I quickly got with, um, Daryl. We realized that basically. The project just went nowhere. Um, I am also questioning.
So it's been financed, but we haven't done it.
Borrowed the money.
So we're paying interest and nothing.
Paid sixty-two thousand dollars in interest on something we didn't even spend the money yet.
And why didn't, and why didn't we, why didn't we look for, well, this wasn't.
You have to, uh, previous. I'm sorry, I can't answer that, I'm worried, um, but. Since the new ones have gotten here, I have, that was one of the first things that I brought to their attention. Obviously, they had to go out multiple times, because there's been nothing but issues, because what we're working off of is really old, because we're working off about three year. Pro, I mean, something three years ago, maybe even longer, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, I don't know.
Where, where's the money?
Um, sitting in your. Um sitting in your.
Which fund?
It's a note.
It's a note.
At the what?
It's on your, it's on your estimated resource, it's like, it's no, there's a project, there is a project, yes.
It's it's a.
Um, Commissioners.
So we did, they they borrowed money and it just sat there and did nothing.
And why didn't we pay it off if we were going to move on? You know?
Well, I guess the intent was to do something, I I again, I'm H R, I can't speak to that, I mean, I have stepped in and had to help bridge it up.
I understand.
Because, I mean, it is what it is. Um but I do want to ask a question, though, before we get too far off the stone building. What is, what H R were for, I mean, we paid a lot of money to do renovations already on the fourth floor.
Actually, the fourth floor was not, was not painted.
That's the third, third floor wasn't painted.
So what are we doing on the?
Renovations is primarily for Tracy, she's growing, her patients are growing. And they want to get more people, I can't speak for her, but this is just. You know, she want to get more people up there. And confidence from all of them, I believe another office as well. She can speak for that, then we can.
And that's for which floor exactly?
So that's twenty, but the only reason I call attention to that Commissioners, and I could honestly, I hate. It's not my business, but I do feel that. We should know, we're putting in hours of overtime. To to do labor, which we did, a lot of hours of overtime.
And and I will say that a lot of this, there's wall removal, building a wall.
But why did we do that before we, do you get what I'm trying to say, like, can we not get to a better place where we're not doing all of that and then going back and redoing all of it all? What I, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Is is that the one where we took a tour and I thought they, the courts had no money for that?
That's the third floor, that's not the fourth.
No, that's the fourth, no, that's, that's the fourth, when we took a walk with Tracy, right, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
And the third floor was.
But they don't have any, I thought they had funds for it.
They do, they do.
It says there's general funds that we utilize.
Yeah.
Yeah, no general fund.
I I understand that, but we did use general funds to pay for it the first time, that's what I'm trying to say. So why did we do that to then just go back and, I guess that's all.
Well, can they, could we get reimbursed from them?
Apparently not, I mean, we should have. And that's what I'm asking, I didn't know.
We can, we can all his ass. I mean, how much money we spent there?
A lot, a lot. A lot.
So Mr. Prosecutor, what do you think?
This, I'm just trying to get us to a point where we make better decisions moving forward, that's that's where I'm at, thank you.
That's what I was just going to suggest, yeah.
That's where I'm at, we need to sit down and put all the key cards and players together and make an informed decision before we're incurring debt, going out, I mean. Now.
I think we're trying to do that.
Yeah, so. Trust me, this is.
But we are doing that now, this this is from. This is from the four. We were even the.
And Commissioners, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, just historically, there was a discussion. Probably five, six years ago. Whether we were even going to use the stone building as accounting anymore because of the expense of some of the renovations that were involved. And then it was decided that there would be still a useful. Use of the building from especially probation department, things related to courts, thing, things that needed to be in close proximity here. And, you know, then we started down this path, we took out the debt, but it really wasn't, like you saw, it was never really followed through, I don't know that there was a. Um. I don't know that there was a really overarching plan necessarily, and I think that we're getting to that point now. So, but you know, I think that at this point, that would be my thought is just. You guys are already starting to do it, but just setting up a better stra- better strategy for how you. Plan these projects, how you move on these projects, so that we don't have the same kind of delays.
I understand, I tell you what I would like to do, it's one Commissioner, I like to set up. Um. What to say. An inspection, I I like to view the get the uh old house. Or the Chestnut Street building, and and let's and let's take a walk through there and see if we either we can use it or sell it.
Exactly, well, we just kept selling it, but we never moved on.
Let's see, exactly, let's see, no, no, if if we need more office space, if we can use it, let's use it, we can't use it, let's sell it. Okay, but you know, the Commissioners, we need to walk through. Maintenance supervisor and. Maybe even the prosecutor's office, say, you know what, let's look at this and see how we can use it, if we can use it, and if we can't, then let's sell it and get the money in. I mean, I mean, we spent thousands of dollars and they told us we can't use it, but.
Oh, and and all we're doing, just like with this, we've been interested on someone in use. Ran an electric boat on there and taxes and everything on, building down there that we don't.
But but if you use that without spending five hundred thousand dollars to remodel something, then let's use that.
I agree.
So, Darryl, let us schedule, I mean, whenever it get with us and and I still watch her. Thank you.
Alex, you done? Alex? All right, you want? Twenty-two, I think we're on.
Twenty-one.
Well. We already discussed why this wasn't done. On twenty-one, correct? I guess twenty and twenty-one are the same.
Twenty-two is actually. Another part of that project.
Great, that's what we're trying.
Another four hundred twenty-seven.
So I was going to say nicely, but no, I was not, that's okay. I'm just trying to make the board aware that this is all correlated to one project, that's all. And I can say this.
Twenty is separate, that's. Adult probation, and then twenty-one and twenty-two is is the one project that the the outstanding, you know, this one.
Is 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 the four twenty-seven also? Where's that money?
That's for the roof replacement.
Has that been borrowed?
That is borrowed.
That's borrowed too. Is the sixty-three thousand interest on both?
Yep, so the the what was borrowed, I think it was one point five, don't quote me, one point six ninety-seven. According to the sheet provided, it was borrowed on. Three. Twelve twenty-five. Now that can't be right. So now that can't be right.
But that's a, but I think maybe you want to. For money.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was a bond, it now it's still.
I think they still.
Okay, yeah, maybe.
Okay, so, just to be clear, if we vote for this, we're 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 initiating.
Well, so I I again, I hate to do this, but what I tasked the Commissioners with. A while back was. Doing just this, sitting down, I have a list of every single part of everything that we own in this town. Of every building that we're just sitting on that we're not utilizing. Um, you know, either we need to go through and start liquidating assets or whatever we need to do, but I only know that because I insure it all. We insure it all, but I have a list of all that. Then outside of that, we need to, I I. This debt, I caught it when we were doing the budget hearing, right, when I saw it, and I'm like, wait a minute, we haven't even. That didn't make sense to me, so I started to ask questions. We figured out that we were, you know, we did incur the debt. Rightfully, whatever, whoever incurred it at that time, previous board, whatever the case may be. But we hadn't lived on it. So. Then we went over to view the stone building, because I had other concerns of, well, we've expended a lot of money in this building, all right? And it it showed, I can give you that, I can tell you down to the bottom dollar. And not only that, but we were doing it on overtime, so that's kind of how. Um, so there's that, and then I started to ask the questions.
And that was all approved by the previous.
Previous, yeah.
Or remitment supervisor.
Correct, correct, and that's where I started to red flags and we're like, whoa, wait a minute, and then. You know, what never made sense to me was that. The 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 roof and the structure was never addressed, so we did all of that work. For it to then just get rained on again.
And we still have a leaking roof and air conditioning.
Correct. So what I tasked this then to do is. Either do we want to stay in this building, because we are literally putting money into a a pit. It's quite friendly. Or what are we doing? Uh we need a capital improvement, we got to sit down and figure out truly. Best way to do this is a capital improvement, like, we just need to sit down and figure out what we're doing, where we're going, and. Uh maybe previous words haven't done the greatest at that, but we have a chance to do it right. And you do have people here to help you.
So. What do we do with this? What? We'll put silk on a pick.
Well, the, I do believe the probation, the probation wants to be there, but.
I mean, but it.
If we can find that, I I guess that's up to the board, it's not made a set.
Well, I think the first thing is, let us look at the other building. Gibson. Not Gibson, um.
Chestnut.
Chestnut.
Well, I understand that, but what about this?
What are the structures of Chestnut building? Pretty good shape?
It's structurally sound.
Structurally sound. How about the roof in that? It seems like every building the county buys, can we have to replace it? Yeah, I would have to look at the first, but I don't have a. I should definitely cosmetic upgrade inside, but structurally, it's uh. I'm a square. You have any idea?
I would have to look it up and get back to you.
No, it's more, it's it's on. Kind of like an attic, big steps, when you say you'll be. Bombed, that's where the ultimate. And it's can be used for this, I mean, we got a court, the judge has changed right there.
Could use it for anything?
I don't think there's anything we'd use it for, nothing that I've seen a need for.
No office built, no office space.
I don't think we need any office space that would fit with that. I mean, it would.
Well, let's take a tour and then and let's either, you know, use it or get rid of it.
Is this here, I mean, you're talking probation and. Probate court, the judge is going to want to be there as his office, the probation is, get out of court, walk across the street to see a probation officer.
They do want to be there, they feel like, but they do, I I will tell you that, so I think that's. I guess what intent was with in crime. The dead, but I don't know, I wasn't here, I I don't know. But I just realized that it was something that needed to be.
But you said, I'm not, I just need to be clear about something. We're being asked to approve these tomorrow.
Yeah.
Are we approving these?
We've already got the money, the loan, we're already going to pay for it all, we just got to find someone to do the work now.
Architects.
Well, my question is, if it's two or three years. And then what happens if we get into where we need another five hundred thousand dollars? And where are we at? The more we prolong these budgets, the worse, I I get that, I understand that, but. We approved million two, we need a billion nine. Have to say, okay.
Well, we've already, I don't know how much we've already sunk in, but we've already sunk between us and the court. We've already sunk a pretty penny into it.
I I guess like we're in a no.
In that, in that situation, we're in the building, we tore it out over there, they bought it. Who hears the bite and then tore it down and out to grassy area after spending.
Just want to bring that out, so in case we get into that situation, it's not put on us, it's like, you know what, we're trying to make. Decent situation out of bad situation.
I also have another just question, and maybe just terminology, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, were both of these projects, they they were both sent out as competitive bids, right? They were. These, they were actually advertised as as sealed bids and open with the bid opening and everything.
Yes.
Okay, I just think we may want to be clear on that because. There, they both say price quotes, and I I think just to be clear for future audit purposes, we should say. If, you know, that we're awarding the lowest and best bid on those, just to be clear, they were actually bid out. Under that statute.
But that's the other question, I guess, are these old, is this, are these bids old or are these current?
These bids are huge.
These are new?
These ones are new.
Yeah, projects been on this desk for two years.
So these are current price?
That's current price. I will show you what I said about one point two, one, one point nine shouldn't exist though.
No, we're still, it looks like we're still.
We're actually under right now, these.
Well, that's because the original soap was not smart.
Just to be, just to be clear.
I'm sorry.
But just to be clear, though, these were, they were recently bid out, or, okay, okay, I was going to say, we're not relying on bids from two years.
That's that's.
Okay, okay. Okay, because I wasn't, I don't think we were really involved in the bid process on this one, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah, this was an architect, it was handled through C J L.
Okay. And they prepared the specs and they.
They prepared the spec, yeah. Yeah.
They had at least done that much, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that wording wise that were.
That was actually, Alex, that was not done.
Oh, that was not done, we went back, right?
We went back and. Updated everything, we did everything. So we spent.
So there was an original set process in mind, and obviously we went, and it just didn't make any sense, so it was, went through that again, that.
Yes, okay.
So to what you're saying, you know. This weekend, so on twenty-one, where it says we sponsor the only price quote, that was a price bid.
Yeah, I would just, I would just change it to say to award the lowest and best bid, which is just being clear that it was actually competitively bid, that's all, instead of price quote.
Okay. More discussion there. Um Diane. Patiently facing facing the floor.
Yeah, I can't sit that long, sorry, I can't sit that long. Like a resource, um item number twenty-three is to rescind. Contract that we um recently awarded, um. This is to rescind the recent contract that we awarded to Clean Choice Maids, finding out that they did not have the non, they did not have the Ohio Health Department Non-Medical Home Health Service License. Even though their contract or their. Posits that they submitted. Uh indicated that they were following all federal, state, local rules. Uh was brought to our attention by Dave Mergan of Mergan and Associates, and also to the Glaufen. So appreciate them bringing that in. Going to uh reality the funds from that contract to the other three vendors that are. Uh currently. Senior regulators. Question on that. Minutes.
Uh we've already discussed all that.
Um. Number twenty-four is regarding the trouble county trend operating financial report, I just want to give you um our quarterly. Figures. One for Lisa. This is the summary of where we're at today. Um. We are well within our local match that we uh promised for the transit systems. The local match funding that we did set aside. Um is for a good three-year period. Fine for now, we expect our system to operate at about one point four million dollars. We receive five hundred fifty-four from the grant, leaving us a net. Nine hundred thousand dollars for our system. Our local match promises one point one million dollars, so we can double the total room to expand our transit system. That's number twenty-four, Mike will give you the operational side of it, but I'd like to jump to item number twenty-six. Which is the um authorizing present the board sign. Ohio grant S F Y two, who says that we're working on for O dot. Um for the local match certification, so that's what item number twenty-six, we just have to be able to sign that off. Go to give that document to Christina. So that once the um. A debt item is hopefully approved tomorrow, then she can get, sign it out tomorrow. We need to turn this over by November eleventh. Mike?
Thank you, Diane, continue with the operating part. Points out when I transfer. Straighter, I'm not going to read through these numbers. Just real fast, yeah. Um, one way trip, we've done thirty-one thousand fifty-six, so we're still up over sixteen hundred fifty-five. We're still on pace to be about. Almost forty-two thousand for the year, so we're still. Went pretty good. Uh but what I really want to talk about are. Sort of coming up. The old tower review, yeah. Yeah. That is due. Uh November fourteen. Everything is completed on that except for. My uh site visits. And I'll be looking at site visits between this week and next week. Once I did site visits, send a visit actually well. I'll send it out November fourteen. Other thing. I talked about is the twenty twenty-seven. Fifty-three uh ten grant application. The applications came out, that took the first. The grant is also due November fourteen. So. Should be twenty twenty-five, oh, it shouldn't. Say. All right. Yeah, right, right. There, so twenty twenty-four.
Oh, I thought, yeah.
That I thought it's. So, and saying that for the grant. Um. So. Uh number twenty-five, it's our sign, it's authorized, Lisa. We're to sign the twenty twenty-seven Ohio Department of Transportation. Often uh authorization resolution. Um we've done this in the past, it's nothing I need to, but she has to sign it. Put on the journal action. And then the number twenty-six is for. Uh. Rick Hernandez, President of the Congress, signed. The Ohio Department of Transportation. Mobile match, and the twenty-seven, it's for Rick Hernandez, President of the Board, to sign. The application certification, so basically, these are the things, these certifications plus the resolution have to be, they actually through the application when I sign. And once I get them. The application is done. So, so once I get everything, I'll get it all off, send it. And all the other thing, um, is that. We are applying for six hundred thousand out, for the certification, local matches, one hundred twenty. This is a little bit, doesn't mean, yes, a thousand, it's last time we got. Yes, we've got five, so, so. It's whatever we.
That's twenty twenty seven or twenty.
Twenty twenty seven.
Is that all we done by November?
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be to ODOT by November fourteen. So, yes, once I get your signatures on things. Get it out.
I just wanna be clear, Bill Danson Prosecutor's Office, on number twenty five. If this is the, you know, like, it's just a, uh, this is a, like, certification of. An agenda item, that would be something that the clerk would absolutely sign off on. But if this is actually a resolution, it's generally to me to delegate the President of the Board to sign. Not the clerk, so I just wanna be clear on what that is, so.
Okay. Honestly. We're, we're, we're not originally seen a way back, man, I thought it was supposed to be the President of the Board. But on the ODOT, actually, it's us.
Uh, so I'm wondering if that, that may be like a certification, that this is a true and accurate. Agenda item that was passed, if so, then that's, that's appropriate.
That's what it is.
Normally, be, if it's an actual agreement, then we would, we would probably. Authorize the President of the Board to sign, but if it's the, if it's just. Certifying the copy of the resolution, that would be, I just wanna be clear.
Right, and basically, and I apologize if it's not resolution with me, basically, the resolution says. What kind commissioners, President of the Board. Rick Hernandez, and then eventually.
The clerk certifications, yes, okay.
That's big, I mean, that's basically just like.
Well, we can help look at it if you need to, but that's, that's all. Okay.
The people will look at. That's my reading.
This is your question, I could. Um, Mike, we're getting into budget stuff for next year.
Yeah.
We're good for twenty twenty six, we'll be good by November for twenty twenty seven. Understand your expressed interest in retiring. When is the best time for us for you to retire? Because January, February, March, I know you've acquired all those three months. When is it best, so that when we make a transition to the next move, we make commissioners. Whether it be having another Department of Transportation head, or going in a different route, when is it gonna be best for us when you are at. Your least amount of work, so that we bring someone in, or do whatever we do. Not affecting applying for any grants down the road that cross us.
Fisher, I appreciate the question. Uh, I, so, I would really like to do this in the executive session. This with you. Or the one thing that I want to talk in the executive session.
We have a set schedule for tomorrow, we have an executive session, we do that tomorrow.
Might be able to, depending, we just have to make sure it fits in one of those G one ones.
It's just gonna be about. I do have a question. What time do you think that'll be, exactly, we have another. One of our meeting. One of our contractors.
Um, I mean, this is a longer agenda, but we've been going pretty quick, I would imagine. The executive session.
We can take that first and then.
Thirty, yeah.
Time. Uh, I'm gonna go see a comfort care man, or. They're on the home and having some correctly, just wants.
The time's up, yeah, you'll be able to hit.
Yeah, so it's like, maybe you call him today and tell him you might get a few minutes. Yeah, I mean, it was supposed to be today, and I moved it tomorrow, so. But, you know, the last time you wanted to do that.
We just, as we budget. We need enough, cuz there's gonna be, there's gonna be different things here, we need to, we need to know that concretely and. Being that there are certain times here, the busier than others, the grants, whatever, we don't wanna miss a beat either, it's transition.
That's fine. Thanks. All right, thank you. Gary.
Uh, Gary is a route engineering engineer, uh, Mr. Item thirty-one. Uh, there's still go drive, project. You need to give these final assessments out before the end of the year. Pay balance can be appropriated. Properties. Wonder if still build drive, project, it did not come in under budget, um. Essentially better assessment, public hearing, we're seventy-five dollar. In nineteen eighty, eighty-six, per service, uh, connection assessment. And those were the assessments we're going to have to. Establish here for the project, because they come in slightly over budget. This was due to the fact of, uh, uh. I did the estimate for the ARP, but. After that time, prices inflated significantly for. By the time it actually come. So. Yeah, we had the art of funding here for three hundred fifty thousand of it. And we came up with a total project of, of six hundred sixteen thousand. Uh, somewhere around, uh. Five hundred ninety.
So we're twenty-six thousand over.
Uh, yes. In, in over thirty years, that means the compliance super district. Over a third year, zero percent compliance super district can have these. And for that, for here. Sorry.
Were you kinda scared that you said over budget, I'd say, like, five.
It's not ideal, but, you know, it's, it's not the other. All right, we've got this, the item thirty-two, this is for the Elmera Water Project, we got a little bit better news here. Uh, this one, you can see the OPWC grant covered. Uh, seven hundred fifty thousand. Then we had. Probably the signature line in there, oh, there it is. Lisa, when that came over, did it, I'm covered by A R.
That's fine, David, I'm sorry.
Uh, covered by A R P grant. You know, Elmera, we had one million three twenty-two, oh, seventy-five of A R P funds. Seven hundred fifty dollars OPWC grant. And then you can see we had a little, uh, about a half a million dollar debt. Uh, that resulted in. Uh. Front footed assessment of forty-one, five, one, nine dollar front foot. Public hearing, that was a thirty-nine, nine, four, three, six. We actually came in at eight dollars, uh. On the, uh, front end assessment. And that's a public hearing, the service connections, we estimated fifteen hundred dollars per service connection. Actually came in at eight, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. We always got that, and. Oh. Anyway, this is, uh, a good result on the Elmera project, payment well below. Better assessment than we're estimated while hearing.
Now, you notified the property owners, yeah, and both of those came in, or they anticipated.
Yes. Uh, Lisa has a letter of letter, both of these projects on your letterhead. You'll fill those out, back to me, I'll take it back, we got a payment coupon if we add to my office. Those will all get mailed out tomorrow afternoon.
How many?
All right, good.
Send a sixty-nine right here, so.
Okay. We had. Yeah, sixty-nine service connections, but there are some bigger properties out there too. I think our total number of letters is like ninety-nine.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I'll make people happy.
All right, and Commissioner's one, one other thing, uh. Latest round of OPWC for next year. The Integrating Committee, we have our meeting in East Gate. And this is current vote tally, hopefully this will be finalized next Tuesday. But, uh. Can see the trouble town project, it was pretty good, it came out pretty good, our. Caleb Road, which will be. Better from face three, that's not a word, town, just. Be placed fourth, between the two counties and that. For that project, and then you can see Green Drive came in. Really well, we're, um, ten there. For that one, and the highway engineers, they're also in the funding range also. If you look at that grant running total column, there's about ten point six million available. So everything I was gonna point it down to about ten point six million. So. Cut off somewhere around that Struthers City. Uh, I. So, our, uh, my department and the highway engineers did it pretty well. Uh, the allocations.
All right, well, there was a letter in Facebook posted, was that a. Cat song Tim Leonard Green, received two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for, through OPWC, that's not correct.
Or is that a?
Their number, right here on the second page. It's seventy-five points.
Was that cattle owner's farm?
Right.
There is another lot of small government funds, I don't know if they got.
Did they, did they appropriate that yet, or did they just refer smaller ones to that?
I'm not sure.
So, remember, they, they just voted on this. Or no, they're not, they're not allocating these till November fifth, right?
Right, no.
And then they'll allocate to the next one.
Today is when they will finalize this.
Did I question that, so we got, when I got this email, said that, that we haven't received yet. I just want clarification, that's all. And do we have any others up here, I guess, Warren City, there's. There's a.
Yeah, there's plenty of other cities and towns.
Portland City number three, that's a good one, Gerard City number two. So they, they went all the way down to about. Seventy-seven.
Point six, that's point six million. If you look at that running total, that's what's available.
And that's more than what they had last year, because I did build a basket, voters bad voted on. Yeah, the last election. Champion Liberty, Allen, we did really good then.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't know whether those have been funded, correct?
This is the, the tally, the, the, all the projects in our district have been scored, these are the. Next Tuesday, we will meet again down at East Gates. Committee in a month. And it is to make the final vote on this town.
On that panel, everything.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't expect anything to change.
So they go up to ten point six. Last year, we had, we had two projects and we were just outside the bubble, and we didn't get these sanitary projects, so. Resistance, we got both of them.
Was it one of those game drive last year?
That commissioner.
One of those.
Green Drive, Green Drive did not make us high here. This year it did.
Now, do we have to vote on what our priorities are like we did last time, cuz last time we voted on the road bridge.
We already did that. Yeah. Eliminate these three projects.
Perfect. And it's competitive, oh, there actually does make it competitive.
Oh, yes.
Everything on the first page, on the second page, everything up to Struthers City.
Yeah. You see that call, you see that call. Rent, running total. This is the request, then. I. Uh, it's six bit, it's a, somewhere in. Okay, that has been drawn in line, the ones that are below this, if they're. Town, you know. They can go into this whole community, one of the, I think, target. Prostration process, they, they still get their.
To fund everything, or these two were seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, as if. Are everybody.
So how much money is in that small community firm?
Uh, I don't have that much, cuz I, I never have anything in it. I don't know, the word of the county.
So, who applies for this, for this small, who applies for this, each township applied for that?
There are applications they put in for this.
Each township that that one wrote.
Yeah, yes, now, the highway, I do know the county engineers for each county. All our township, they'll actually prepare the applications for.
But it's done by each, for each township.
Yes.
Get a few more in there that hopefully will make the cut, Marford, Brookfield, was that a Bristol? River City. Last year, they didn't get to about ten, I think it was, or two, just outside the bubble.
Hey, drive, was that that type, that side? What's up development there, right?
That is the area behind the McKinley Heights Fire Station.
Yeah, somebody wants to develop?
Yes, and there is a developer, uh, auto belt, auto belly roll stage, and they keep property out there. Our, I didn't even thought that, there is a. Uh.
The only neighbor way behind that. Is if we get that, and he gets, it's starting to evolve.
Yeah, so that, that is a side benefit on this project, but we do have petitions from the people behind that fire station and the people on Anderson Moore Road. And still wagon road up there. So we are getting this in. As part of those responses, those petitions.
So when, and if this gets approved, will you notify him so he can start developing it?
Yeah, no, believe me, he goes to these OPWC.
I've seen, I just wanted to make sure, because we're gonna need housing, he's willing to start developing.
Oh, we need to get water line up there. Got just going, watering. This is part of the.
So what's needed to get the water?
This is part of the still wagon road waterline project too, same area.
Where is that at?
At the public hearing.
That's when we had to hear it, get the files sent to the Anderson Moore's Road to join the project.
I've been down there talking to Niles, and we need to go ahead. The next thing is to get an engineer to sort of expand our drawings and take any of these other little extra. That's one of the things behind this. Get RFU out.
That was good. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, thirty-three. This is the Veteran Service on the Commission, Veterans Office, right, it's work, monthly activity. Very, very. Um. That car Michael was here. See the twenty twenty-five monthly report tourism. Um. We were adding an executive session, we've already got them on here, yeah, this is not Mike.
That, that was one I requested, I know, somewhat different, this is different, where is this?
Mike?
This was put on to cover what, yes, was asked.
Okay.
So this was already taken.
It was.
Um, yes, uh, so that's why I have like.
Okay, so then that would incorporate, I would like to have another executive session with. Shell Goss, Dogtown. The Commissioners, three of them. Um. So that would be covered under importance.
If that's what, I don't know what I don't know, but it does what.
That would be under a different code, it's considered employment, that, that I believe is considered something else.
Well.
So I think what I can do is.
A discipline.
Okay, so I need the whole G one, I'll add whole G one.
Yeah.
That way it covers all of us.
Yes, the discipline.
Yes, so G one encompasses employment, dismissal, investigations, uh, hiring, firing. Uh, uh, discipline. Plans, yeah.
Okay, so while we're on, it's shells here before I get to. Phil.
Yeah, the show, I was, honey, go for it, I was just here to, um, uh, see if, uh, we had made a decision on that. We were to discuss today, uh, if you guys had decided on, we were going to.
Yeah, three present. There's three additional here. I believe that we had mentioned up to seven, right? Is that correct, or?
Okay.
Did I miss that?
That seven, you, yeah, seven you have decided on, but we discussed on the twenty eighth, on the twenty third. We discussed on the twenty-eighth, on the twenty-third, um, seven members. I'm not sure we even have enough expectations for seven members. I didn't, I had, I didn't receive any, um.
Yeah, you can always name it later.
Yeah, absolutely, Christina didn't receive any more.
Did you happen to look at these, Michelle?
Well, there's four, we already got three on there, so that would make seven.
Yeah, those, those are.
Those are four here?
Yeah.
Oh, there is four here, I know.
I recommend we go with these four, let me get them, this is the deadline, we got four.
Yeah, and the only question we had was about. He can serve one again.
Be no different than Jason serving on it.
The only difference is if we go to their property, then that would make a difference.
Well, Jason recommends we go to his property.
Yeah.
He would, he's exempt that, be the same.
Well.
He dated up to not vote on it, up to staying.
I, I get all that, didn't we ask the prosecutor, he never got back?
Yeah, because it was an advisory, um. So the Ohio Ethics Convention, it takes a different stance, I'm not necessarily providing for advisory panels because. State or commissioners still be waiting for it again, make the decision, information is your department head, um. But again, this is where I think Bill was kind of trying to tell the board the scope that I've been trying to manage to narrow down. Is where this becomes really important, so if the scope is to find and vote on a new place, they could bring you recommendations, but the vote still comes to. Guys, so I, I guess either way, either Jason and or animal welfare, they would then have to recuse themselves. The good thing about that is if there's still three, that could be three. So if there's four, let's say it was two, two, that could be problematic. But with three, at least if one had to recuse themselves, then I estimate so. And again, their vote isn't in advisory capacity, not in actual, you guys make it.
I just made it.
Correct, yes, that is, that is important, yes.
Actually, I think maybe it's good, and that kind of offsets.
I think it's okay when you're.
It's an offset, there's animal welfare, there's, you know, that's true, I mean. And then again, it's not fundraising, it's, uh, it's advising, advisory, and I think the both, we. We agree, we ultimately have to vote on it.
I mean, it's probably been about a month since we.
Yeah.
So I, I agree, I get, I may move forward.
Okay, sure.
Let's start being and get some work done.
Okay, we still have the.
Your senior levy.
The store society food here, so. You're okay? What's that?
I said, we should, we should, senior levy.
I think he's referring to the planning commission. And senior levy.
Oh, the membership. Um. At senior levy, there's, here's planning commission.
Did we post these, or when do we post them, when was the deadline for these?
Okay, so Phil wants to continue. Mr. Davies. Don't have any problem with that, do we?
As long as we posted, we have deadline, people all get their application.
Why does Mr. Davies have two? Then I just get to, these are, these are the same, but I think. Mr. Davies.
My bad.
Huh?
My bad.
Oh, that's you?
No, that's me.
Sure, we have.
You should have three in there, you should have Bill Fag, Mr. Davies, and then another one.
Thing your name's on, I'd be appointing you.
You should have one or James Walker.
No, I don't have James Walker.
The planning's deadline is.
Oh, nineteen fifteen. Fifteen. So.
It's been in for a while, it's been in for.
Okay. Okay, well, we're waiting.
Well, we have the senior levy too.
But I think you're good, Toby, I think you're off.
I have one that's vacant, but I said wait until you're doing the year end. And of the year end, three, I know two are. Yeah, but it needs to, it's two. Feeling it's, now it could be three, three, four years. If he's willing to be a two, to the end of the year, however. But if you're to ask, I know, extend it into the three year, I just want to avoid that.
You want to make sure it's on.
So we have two.
For the end of the year.
Yeah.
Position.
Three. There's three that are going to expire at the end of the year, and we have one that's still open, it's four positions. Well, but.
Did you get any additional?
I don't get them, you get them, I never even see this process.
This is all we got, and when, and we posted this with the deadline ending when?
I believe it was the seventeenth. Are you trying to go one or all four?
So if we, I think you still need two more.
Tell you of the three that are expiring, two of the three want to. So we're telling you that for Christina and Sam Lemon, who's. So third one is Dominic Marques, and he hasn't said, and I think. He is stepping. Stepping back a lot.
What are you asking for, are they additional?
We know we didn't want to after Sam and.
Right.
So I mean, I'm going to be heading in here, here, right? Then they don't have ones, oh, yeah. But we also. Seventies, so it doesn't.
Yeah. Hey, yes, oh. It's been a long beat, it kind of.
It's all good, I'm a relative patient. Okay, I, I'm going to pass around the folder. Um, that has our most recent newsletter, my name is Ryan, I'm planning to. Trump County Social Society, I'm directing operations, I'm stepping in. Inside has our newsletter, our most updated newsletter, it has information on our digitization services, some information about our calendar events. And then also the Museum of Science Fiction, that's your, that's what we're working on, as everybody, they, they, raise the lunch. All right, all right, I'll keep this really quick, uh, so. Uh, since we received, uh, operating send commissioners, we would like to do a better job reporting back to you, so that's all. Okay, so in fact, it reached about seven thousand people this year through programs, events, outreach, field trips, tours of the Southern Museum and Johnson. We had every single fourth grade student in one school was participating along with K D, come out to familiar role in brief history of, uh, Warren City. Uh, to choose other community tables such as Family Day, Oktoberfest, Ghost Walk, final items like a downtown bus tour and the rental museum box. Essentially, things in our collection that were a session, that we have to pitch up that kids can interact, actually interact with the world. So that's, that's all we have, we're feeling. To kids who've never worn a kid's. To be possible, first time to cover off of this, uh, digitization services. Um, you see many fun right here in twenty-four to purchase an automatic format pie that doesn't exist here. That can digitize maps and things, this is the only scanner that's signed between here and even, and this year we decided to offer services for this brochure. Other people, uh, since we started this program, we have scanned items like family scrapples, photo albums, community members. Uh, so that they have digital capacity to keep themselves, share others, and also plus scanning all of our maps, group prints, people's size photographs. So there are over twenty-five thousand that can scan into our software and help us successfully. We want to be transparent about what we want. We've also done a little more of American help weeks this year, um, we are hosting full-time Iowa Street Service Club member. Uh, Amy Warner, Warner, who was working in the community of thirty-two soulful, uh, sites in our calendar, is the most. Um, uh, she started in September and is next to the ballot, working in the state of Brooklyn, so the signs. Um, and he's also helping us with help explaining for the total number of soulful sites. We hope we meet with each of the thirty-two groups throughout from county two, three, five, and two, six, and collect data of all their strengths and challenges. Our hope is that we can better support each of the two groups, that we have a clearer sense of what they're gonna be up. So that he can either provide service directly, or we can match certain groups of other sort of groups. We have also been supporting Bristol Historical Society, it responds to preserve the Civil War monument. Uh, it's currently about sixty percent funded, their monument is the oldest Civil War monument in Iowa and the second oldest museum. So if you'd like to donate, we can, we can, we can. Um, we also, uh, we're out there, we've worked with the Trump County Economic Service Commission, City of Warren, to work on the banner thing, see about, um, downtown Warren. Today, yeah, a hundred and ninety-six percent, so they'll come down and have protection say. I'm going to. Last year, the Trump County Soul Society officially merged with Southern Museum inside of one from county public library. And through a partnership with Lions, we're in the process of transfiling nine hundred letters, written mostly from Brian Northfield and Brookfield. To establish this to be two hundreds, this is one of the most significant collections of letters, uh, written between the chapters on the ground, though, state. And our goal is to give this permission to researchers and universities. Um. The Southern Museum will be moving out of the library to the mortgage this Saturday, two, six, we're also part of Lions, who explore after school program at Mary Brookfield. Where we partner with them to do educational programming, whether that's going to science field trips or bringing things like these to lost that to one of our. Bringing times to our national. Uh, lastly, and most exciting for us, um, we're working on Museum of Science Fiction, big starts. We have raised just about seven hundred thousand of our first million dollars for the society of the public, which is allowing us to be developing plans for. Our goal is opening first and second floors of building as well as basement. And we are starting to apply funding as a larger opportunity this month. This past month, we applied for two point six million dollars to high retirement resources and two million gap budget. Each one of those required about thirty letters of representation. First one fifteen percent. And those letters came from all over our region, but that was not given by a street or valid person. Again, that's right, last year we completed one of this plan, he's been on the study of the mission. We did an economic development set for them to see. They eventually are becoming organizations in the country, also reference that data, the global cell phone traffic. Traffic, and our estimated amount should expect around fifty thousand visits. That equals to just about eight point one million dollars total. Um, as evidence of that, we had a partnership with the Central Langston House, all the community, they had a Star Trek exhibit. Donated about five, fifteen bucks to their exhibit. Star Trek, and normally they have about two thousand visitors, there's a sale for five thousand in thirty countries. Um, then we also partnered with Cosi, donated, uh, she rented from us about three original production batch for Star Wars. They had sixty-five visitors. So to try to give you a sense of how can we add any part of destruction. Not just, but to provide yourself. Like I said, I'm not.
And you're doing a great job, uh, we appreciate the services. And it's crucial too, as we move forward with, um, economic development, these types of sources are available. For those that want to utilize, you know, all these services. You are in competition with Sam Lemon, who's appeared, right?
Oh.
I mean, I, I, I think you're, you're going to become a pretty.
Okay.
Interesting, great.
Oh.
Huh?
It's a great. Great.
Oh, yeah, great, yeah, yeah, he's getting a little bit there, distinguished, it's, it's a distinguished, it's a distinguished.
So when you apply for grants, you receive those money, say like, Commissioner Loy and I, we both have been contacting Bristol. On the, on the monument there, so is there a chance that they can get some grant money? Say if they're like five thousand dollars short, where you said.
From us, those grants are earmarked for specific projects, specifically Museum of Science Fiction, those larger grants. Um, generally speaking, that's not helpful, so.
You think, so it's five thousand, a large amount?
Um, for that project, I would consider that as a large amount, yes. But it varies on contract.
So would, would you be able to get, get them any money at all? Get, to get that down?
Uh, so potentially, but unfortunately, those. Grants will be applied for specifically to sit upon, so that money is going to be out if we receive it to those projects.
Say that's from this year, right?
Well, we'll find out about one of them in, hopefully in March, and the other one, but.
So you can apply for another grant for that specific, help run unit?
That's not, yeah. And a lot of the grant funding sources for state of Ohio, Ohio Humanities, Arts Council, have actually been suspected. So. Government funding, most of them are government funded, or state funded, so.
When you think, if that would kind of move up the ladder, this is the second oldest monument in the state.
Commissioner, they're at sixty-three percent, they just posted this two weeks ago, they're going to have it funded probably by the end of the year. Through their, uh, GoFundMe, I think it's called Zezzi or.
It's called Zepi.
Zepi, yeah, I, I contributed, if anybody else wants to go on the historical website, there's a link where you can contribute a dollar amount. Um. I really think that it will be funded through this crowdsourcing app that it's been, uh. Posted by the Society Partnership with, is it Bristol?
Yeah.
Historical Society.
It's been fantastic, that means you're a fantastic site, I'm charging some fees, and I'm charging some, so to this.
I saw a donor anonymously donated five thousand dollars to it, so if that gives anyone any.
This one project?
For, for the, for the Civil War Monument, yes.
Yeah.
So.
We're happy to. Anything else?
No, that's great, thank you.
Thank you for a lot.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you for your patience.
Oh, of course.
For long. Um.
Okay.
Okay, we have T on one?
Yeah.
I believe this. Name thing, John? Yes.
You start Chinese people?
No, no, I have a spaniel name, but no spaniel.
They not. These anymore?
Oh, that's okay, well.
Yeah, but maybe. First Lisa, it's. And the least of areas, uh, Chinese Communist Party. In the spread, the word. Uh, I'm talking about the. Recently, very important issue we have been trying to travel around the. Ohio. You form. I don't know. The Chinese Communist Party started the persecution of, um, fascism, when it's six years. And. Over a hundred million people have been persecuted. They are arrested, beaten up. And, uh, beaten out of school, out of job, don't encounter, and everybody is so terrible. They are. Even often harvesting people, just kill people. This is no fun, this is very serious. People who want some. Chen Tai Min, he was an organ harvester. From here back to here, fourteen inches. Over, this guy. And his liver and lung, especially, uh, often harvest. Just before he was taken again, over, again, he escaped. And with the help of US Undersecretary of the State Department. He was able to count the US in Washington DC and then New York. But he's not safe at all. Because he's chased, followed, and, uh. They preyed with auto accident, trying to kill him. And also broke into his house. But nothing was stolen. He was in, they tried to simply kill him. Because he's the only surviving. That are. Are no threat. And for the open harvest. Yeah. In O S U. Ohio, uh, Columbus. Farland共产党just have to come. With the three words, two summonees, compassion, and tolerance on it. Then they cast it, it's a kind of slash broken. And, uh. The Chinese Communist Party is the most, and they bring the most China in the last seventy-six years. And they extend the outside world. They spend seven billion dollars each year. On Chinese media. And now ninety-five percent of the Chinese media. Newsreader, radio, TV, all. Being controlled by the Chinese Communist Party. And even though. Chinese have immigrated to this country for thirty, forty, fifty years. They are still. In brave. This Chinese art authority. For instance, in. This one man, what Johnson. He was trying to write the, the. Internal revenue staff and trying to say, uh, and, uh, San Yin. Is, uh, violating the. Tax law and invasion law. But. That, uh, in the internal revenue staff is happened to be an FBI. So on the. He was arrested on the spot. And also another person. Working with him and to do the same thing was also arrested. These are all the propaganda. Of making this happen. And the Chinese, uh, they also influence the Western media. They spend money to buy the ads, whole session in New York Times and Washington Press and so on. And Washington Post and so on. So people when read the newspaper, they do not recognize that's the ads. And, uh, so reading the document, great hatred. They say, US is bad, democracy is bad, Japanese is bad. So that's why Chinese people get into United States, they hate Americans. And, uh, in, uh. When the, the. Yeah, so November eleven, the, sorry. That's the, the Trump power, the, the all of them. And so they pay me, say, oh, it's good. That's why the Chinese. Have very busy in one. And actually, in the. Have max shooting threat and bomb shooting threat. And, uh, San Yin gave. Eight hundred performances in two hundred cities each year. But during last year and this year, Chinese Communist Party sent the spear spies and. Make, uh, two hundred fifty bomb threats to theaters and also. Mass shooting threats in fourteen countries. That's a very serious. In February. Uh, Kennedy Center. Was performing the singing. Uh, received bombing. And also in Cincinnati. And in February was also performing singing. Uh. They made the force fire alarm, the just next to the performing center. So, uh. Eight, uh, engines. Go there, only one, there's nothing there. And then another day, they said, next building is on fire. Another eight, nine. Engines from the way it just interfered this performance. This performance is so good. Each year about million people, unfortunately enjoying at number of the impact. See, it's, uh, very, very talented. All the, uh, hearing about this. Other Chinese Communist Party. Is everything nice? Uh, free nature, also, uh, free to violence. It's, you know, so what? What can we do?
That's good. Yeah. I think now. If you look at anybody. Try to order. States, uh, the federal senate. To send it. The federal senate to pass a rest, uh. An app, S A one seven. This is a, is Farland共产党protection app, because these are. Uh.
Already passed on the.
It's already passed, uh, on the, on, uh, on the house, but just we send it. Pass. If passed, then those, uh, open halves in the hand. Are persecuted in Farland. They are not allowed out here. They are in state in the West. Uh, will be fifty, right?
You still have family there?
Uh, yeah, and actually I received two, almost forty.
Four years?
Forty. Forty years, we are for here.
Okay.
And now I'm seventy.
Now you're almost seventy?
Yes.
You look thirty.
Within your sense like two thousand seven, I mean, like nineteen ninety-eight. It was here. But we've been here since two thousand six. We know our whole citizens so nice here. We don't want everybody's school like we. You know, the first user in China, but now they're not in China. They are here and go. That's why we are realized, they can't stand up.
These states, you know, Ohio, they in New York, where the budget to be.
I am anywhere around.
Not only in America, you're right.
Yeah.
I'm.
Uh, just, I have personally received two, that's right away, uh, well. And also. One day, my wife was at home, just.
Cell phone, so I guess.
My wife was upstairs at home. She was sending a message. But it was. In Chinese, and it's a picture of most of those. Do you know? Yeah, that's the founder of Chinese. And so that's, and he's, uh, she's your Chinese children. In Chinese, Chinese, and. And, uh. Because she's saying that I sent, uh, uh. Email to the senator and. But I miss, I forgot to put their secrets in my pen. And she's not reminding me. And then we see the. A message saying not, nobody sent any contact information to send. Send it out to, and you are in poor people. And they will come back and. And so on, and then say, your relatives in China will be in danger. And so is the Chinese.
So S A one seven.
I, no, I, not I, eight.
S A eight.
Eight, eight, one seven. Yeah, I will send you. Yeah.
Cause we, we do have to finish up a meeting here. We have another meeting.
Basically, what you're trying to just establish that. Not all Chinese is bad as the Chinese Communist Party is what we have to watch for.
Perfect.
And asking for help, do we understand the difference?
But be careful if you have a Chinese colleague. Even though he or he is very kind, but when she, uh, and you ask her opinion. She may stand automatically about Chinese Communist Party.
So most of people in China, they come to here, they don't speak English well like us. And they don't really read the newspaper or even are being straight idiots. So they still keep reading Chinese.
So they say San Yin is bad, Farland is bad, so many. We have the event in, um, Cleveland, Indian Foundation. Everything when we are first two years and then. Tomorrow, we are going to have the event, six o'clock in the evening. I received an email saying sorry, the event was cancelled. Why? Because they are Asian, uh, a life report, there is a doctor. She is Chinese. She said, uh, it's political, saying San Yin is political, so cancelled. And this happens many, many places. Yeah. And just to let you know, one thing, that's, you know.
We have another meeting. I'm sorry, we have another meeting, but we appreciate you coming and presentation. We will reach out. You, Senator, um, uh, to be proud of me, with Moreno, both. Moreno staff.
And Moreno, yeah, and also, uh, pizza.
Yeah, Houston, John Houston. Okay.
Thank you.
Everyone, see, they're having a back talk.
Thank you.
And blessings to you and your. On your ways.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
That's it. Thank you for your.
They all have eyes, they even one day, two days, five days. They think that they want to get the other thing.
We have heard from, uh. Randy Law, uh, coming over.
He, uh, he texted me.
Very short chat.
He texted me and I'll just give you his words, um. He wants her, he thinks she's best. And he's not gonna recommend getting rid of her because he thinks he's best represented their experience. Was the court or job representing him to do his job.
Has he seen what he's seen?
He said he doesn't watch Facebook, he's not following all the Facebook and local politics drama. Uh, he's just looking for what's best for him. And being that she worked at clerk court, she understands what he's. Being charged with contempt, why is not doing the job? She, she did the job there and understands that the tasks the judges are asking him. Are possible for him to do under short staff.
That's where it's the short staff.
Uh, he, he lost two of his employees that went to judges. They, they moved upstairs to different positions. And then the judges are hitting on him saying, hey, you're not getting this work done quick enough. But he's like, that's because you just hired my two best people. And now you're telling me I'm not getting this work done. He had. Down position and then to the left of transfers. When other positions came over with the judge, which left him very short staff there, trying to catch up and do the work. That's what the contention is and. Couldn't get a lot of things filed the right way. The judge apparently is charged him with contempt for not getting it done. That's where he needs representation to fight back and say. We're very short staffed.
Why is it, why, why does he need to hire two people that he wants?
I thought being a charge.
Oh, I, it's a simple question.
I, I think he did, but he said it's gonna take them weeks to months to understand the job.
People either, how long?
Just recently, over the last couple of months.
So. To me, you lost your people, you, those people provided to your office, you could. About there, but you need.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Are we talking about the title side, the clerk side of the crown?
Of course.
Great, so.
Why, why he short staffed over on that side?
Sure, so the answer that I got was obviously, you know, that is cheap. It's not available, right? Um.
That's just.
Yeah, that's no, you're talking about his staff.
Right, but then Mr. Blue is also not available today, so he is literally the only person over there, um.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about the judge has taken his employees and him not having positions filled. That they've been filled since then, but how, at what timeframe? What are we looking at? Why is he saying he's short staffed from back then? Why did this occur with the judge that?
I can speak to his operations, but I can tell you that the staffing positions have to fill over on clerk side.
Recently, within a month?
Past like probably three to six months, three months, six months. Three months.
So it's not a staff issue?
I mean, they're new. I don't know that they are up to speed. I mean, there is a training here, of course, but I, I can't speak for. I don't know anything else, so what I, I know, so.
So maybe what he said, that's, it's the truth. I don't know. You gotta ask the question, is he short staffed or isn't he short staffed?
And then, I mean, I will tell you too, they get lunches and they need to give you jobs, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, you've had some disciplines, uh, you've had some disciplines with people about time off and he's had some illness from what he said too.
I just didn't want to get into all that. I mean, obviously people call up saying, yes, that's going on, but I, I don't know, I'm not there, so I couldn't tell you a truth.
And, and I, like I said, I haven't seen.
So I keep seeing. I recommend do some homework tonight and see what you.
Problem is. If I listen to what Bill Manzo is saying. He has the right to pick his representation. And, and the court already proved that also, so how could we say no?
Read your emails, because we got some.
I, 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 I understand that, and, and I trust your guys of what you're saying. If I say no, would you have?
And that's fine. If it's his call and the prosecutor's call, that's fine. I just wanna be on the record saying I don't know.
You need to put that in, in, in a resolution somewhere saying that. You know, this was strictly on, on the courts. Judging.
It's a, it's a tough situation because of this, after statutory knowledge. However. Everything does show that this was the clerk's choice of legal counsel entered in the comment, it had to be in the comments. As well, so, but I can understand the saying, board commissioners. To. Set. Sires.
Yep, we don't have the records. If we say no, we can't say no, with Bill, right?
Yeah, so.
Exactly say that. He said he has a.
Yeah, you have to go through Randy and the Congress, so it would be, I'm just turning this on there, it'd be. A bickering united front, if you guys, if Gordon Randy was on the same page on step one, if you're not on the same page, then you're gonna go over to the administrative judge of the common court. Uh, at least word, and you're gonna have to take it up with, which then you're now putting two other elected officials in this job. So now we just went from. Two, I, I'm just being honest, I deal with this with the loss of.
I, I just think, I mean, that's so much strong over the last four years. We're doing really good as a board of three commissioners here. I don't want anything that's going on in any other department, clerks, prosecutors, wherever to affect the momentum we have moving forward right now. And this is the distraction to the extent where we're getting accused and blamed and drug into the smire of whatever's going on, mahoning. And, and I think we just need to cut ties with any of the negativity stuff and move forward with the mission that we were elected to do. Without the draw as if, as much as we can avoid it.
I, I don't disagree with you, but if the prosecutor is saying we can't do that, how would we do it? That's my problem.
Well, and like I said, that's about. Well, and like I said, that's above our pay grade for them to make that decision. They say we can't.
Or common police is saying that they approve that, so. Do you reach out to them, say, hey, are you guys aware of what's going on?
I think.
If we voted.
I think we should reach out to Mr. Law and find out his mindset.
Try to.
Well, they probably don't want to do it in a public setting, just like Mike here, I, I mean.
No. I wouldn't like the petition. I don't think.
Well, we could regulate it. This is the reason for it. I, I don't know.
Um, I, I don't know, because obviously I don't know what I don't know, but it's pending an imminent court action. So if there's an actual lawsuit or something on the table. There is an executive session for that. I'm not saying, please don't misconstrue, I'm not saying that that fits this because. Right, I don't know, the imminent, the pending imminent. Action doesn't, isn't against the court commission, because that's the problem, right? So it's between who it's between. Um, and this is just a convoluted.
I think, I think what we do tomorrow is, what you should make a statement that. Posits, but circumstances.
I did, if this thing just turns bad, which I just got the gut feeling that. This circus is gonna continue. I've been a part of a circus for two years of my term. And so then the staff. I will tell you, did you ever.
I'm with the circus, I come to see.
Right, you know, and when you're trying to get rid of a circus, you don't import more.
I'm with the circus, I come to see it.
So.
Alright, well, we'll have to discuss that.
And we'll discuss with Angela too, if there is an executive section for pending. Possible litigation or possible, if there's something that fits that.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I do know that that is the point. We are. Board of Commissioners is, you're not. I know, again, maybe there's something I don't know.
Result in action from them. Against us for retracting it. That shows me that there's, could be. Um, maybe, let them think, we put them on the spot here. Let's let his department think of and act on it. And, and put their hands together on the floor and figure it out.
Especially with.
Yeah.
We just need to stay focused to keep the. Keep the course wrong, because we're doing a lot of good and we had a lot of momentum the last couple of weeks and. We don't need setbacks, too much good to go on.
Like I said, I haven't seen.
Yeah.
I'll find it, so. Come on, if you react in case, that's all you. Right, and that's what people want you.
There's a lot of false stuff going around right now. This could be part of it.
Ridiculous stuff. I didn't know this.
Yeah, I just saw, I did see that one.
Well, she's getting good.
That AI stuff is scary. When you look at how realistic this stuff can look. I mean, one thing, like doctoring a picture.
Yeah.
Will they make, will they can make somebody. Move and dance and the things I've seen. In the last couple of weeks, it tells on me, it's got a wedding ring on it. But it, it's.
Different hands.
They're different hands, but. This, this, this is leading to, I mean, this is twenty twenty-five. This is gonna be like in twenty twenty-seven.
This is why.
I mean, we're gonna get a picture, Commissioner Bernard murdering someone in front of the courthouse and it's front page news.
Anything, anything you see on the internet, take with a grain of salt. Anymore, you can't believe it. They're not even putting a disclosure here that it's AI. That's a problem. You know, there's one thing, you know, putting it on, but disclose.
I, I think.
You would hope so, but. I mean, some people, they said. I won't mention names, but somebody said, I thought that was really Danny, and they're smart people. So.
There's all kinds of stuff. Over this last couple of weeks is.
You just gotta ignore it, guys. Don't look at it. I, I don't.
I've been ignoring, I don't, I don't respond to. That's fine.
As long as you think you're doing. The right thing.
That's it. Keep doing the right thing.
Well, the more they hit you, the more they, they know you're.
Oh, wait, you need to motion.
The wars and elections, dealing with all the other stuff, we just need to focus on the work.
I agree. And, and I've said this before. We may disagree, but walk out of here. And all of the interfere. And, and I think the healthy debate is going to need to. What was the danger?
I'll second the motion.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.
Sir Lloyd?
Yes.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.